Should I share my screen now?
Hold on one second, Chris.
Meeting is live, gentlemen.
Okay, um, I would like to call the order these study session of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California's Wednesday, August 18th meeting. Adam, we have one commissioner who's having trouble logging on, so call her name and we will make sure her name gets on the minutes.
Yes.
Call the role, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir, and the meeting, the minutes will reflect the time when she joined the meeting. So Commissioner Camp. Commissioner Camp is is absent from this meeting today. Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler, she will be joining us a little bit later. Vice Chair Tyler, she is absent from this meeting. Chair Protem McCon.
Here.
And Chair Crandall.
Here.
Okay, we have one item on our study session, architectural design guidelines and Christopher Wright for the city will be making a presentation, Christopher.
Good, everybody see my screen, okay? Okay. Good evening, Commission, Christopher Wright, associate planner. This is a study session on our architectural guidelines, going a little more depth from our last orientation of our regulatory and policy documents. The agenda this evening is first to talk about general plan policy that guides the use of our design guidelines as a tool of reviewing projects, no review of our design guidelines, how they work, subject areas and larger themes, and examples of some architecture as like a guide of quality design, and then the designer view process. So first this map shows the areas in which our policies call for Spanish architecture or Spanish colonial revival architecture. The darker brown area is the architectural overlay district that requires Spanish colonial revival in the downtown. The pure bowl in the North Beach focus areas, the general plan. That orange areas are also in the architectural overlay, but they require Spanish architecture. So you have the option of doing Monterey, Mediterranean, Mission, some other true form of Spanish architecture. The lavender shaded areas, the policies in the general plan also call for Spanish architecture. They're not in the architectural overlay, but those, any projects, new new development or major remodels and in all these areas require these architectural styles. And lastly, these stars are freeway gateways. So properties that are adjoining the off-ramp intersections and the off-ramps themselves require Spanish colonial revival architecture. This is a little detoured detailed map in case you want to go back to look at the the core areas, the architectural rela. So we have three main documents that are used to get a sense of quality design when reviewing projects. When a project requires a discretionary permit, our design guidelines are used and there's a required finding that has to be met to approve an entitlement. And the guidelines, first, there's a city guidelines that have general guidelines on massing and site design and some other general topics. Where Spanish colonial revival architecture, you could even extend that to Spanish architecture. There's some other commonality there. The Henry Lenny guidelines are used, they're graphical, they're a good tool of communicating the public, particular what Spanish colonial revival architecture is all about. And then when there's a specific plan, like the pure bowl, then you first go to the specific plan, design guidelines. If there's not a design guideline on a particular topic, you would revert to the city guidelines as a tool of reviewing a project. There's a lot of types of design guidelines that I don't intend to go into detail tonight. I'd rather focus on some larger themes to take away is my experience working with it, my 17 years with the city. And there are some categories that the commission could be mindful of and just helping group the types of subjects. So first site plans and context, there's guidelines that focus on things like Spanish colonial revival is supposed to be pedestrian oriented. There's supposed to be there for encouragement of courtyards, the sales, other public spaces, so urban open area is a standard intermixed use zones. So that along the streetscape, you have inviting spaces for pedestrian activity. Also neighborhood context, understanding how a project fits into surrounding development, not only from a compatibility point of view, but then looking at things like pedestrian access and overall, how the project contributes towards the larger character of the district. Landscape, the city design guidelines has appendix with plant types. Some of those plant types will need to be updated to reflect your general plan. Overall, there's a work program that I mentioned in our last study session to update our guidelines. But nevertheless, the appendix is a really good starting tool for landscape types. Landscape isn't a part of project design where you're trying to soften the mass of buildings. There are guidelines that call for landscaping along the street frontages of buildings. One other note on site plans, there's a intent to have buildings, particularly commercial buildings, more running towards the street. Parking, so the parking is supposed to be ideally located behind the buildings from the street so that they're not prominent. Building equipment is supposed to be screened from the street. And then lastly, the main item is architecture. On the right here is an index from our Henry Lenny guidelines. There's a variety of topics, as you can see. And at this point, I'd like to go over the larger thematic items. So first of all, what is always a really good guide for understanding Spanish colonial revival architecture is this drawing really does a good job of explaining it. When you go and look at the history of the style, it goes back to the like the time of the missions and there's a lot of influences over time from Spain and some other culture. And so when you go back to the construction methods and technology of the time, there wasn't a means obviously to have steel. There was a lot of labor that went into building a structure, they used the Dobby. So there was a large emphasis on first on function and then style, so it wasn't really intended at the very beginning, some of these older buildings to focus a lot on quality of sign. But over time, the interpretation and application of the architectural style has placed more emphasis on interpreting the intent of that design and fitting it in within the context of the uses that we have today. So there are more guidelines and understanding of what works and doesn't based on a lot of projects that haven't worked out well. And we have some good examples in the city of what has worked well. So that this drawing on the left here, I think it under, it really does a good job of explaining how Spanish colonial revival architecture is pretty simple when you think back to that history. That they didn't have a lot of plane breaks because it costs a lot of expense and time. And just technology today is required to bump out a building and then have it recess. So there was more of an emphasis on other things to break up a building that I'll get into, but if you take like a really large building, what they would do, this building on the right, more of a village concept, is they would take a project and break it into parts. And so when you're reviewing a project, if you think about it in terms of components, little elements, then it helps to break down a project and not just focus on, well, it's too big. You can then target a part of the project and understand, does that add to the value of the project? Is there something that needs to be done to reduce the apparent massing of that area with some details that I can talk about in a minute? Okay, so I have some examples here to highlight those other items. There, you should take a note that the first plate line, so the first level of buildings would have more mass, there's an emphasis on mass of stucco. Because they needed that mass to support second stories, they didn't have steel. So you want to emphasize that stucco, so thick columns, when you have archways. If you have a colonade, again, thick columns. You want to have deep recesses and windows, if you're going to have archways, they need to be proper proportion. From the standpoint that those archways are looking like they support the weight above, rooted back in Greek architecture and how all that that works from an engineering. The windows need to have also deep recesses and there are wood windows are favored, however, there is newer technology and there's a actually planning commission policy staff uses to advise applicants where we have quality alternatives now, like al- aluminum and fiberglass in some areas, if you don't have a copy, that policy staff can provide it to you. And also there are things like, on the bottom left, you could see Juliet balconies. And there's emphasis on shed roofs, so slightly slope roofs and double barrel tile to add texture. Here's a couple of some other projects. First, the the top one, you might recognize Marblehead Coastal Shopping Center, otherwise known as the outlets. And you could see in that project that you have this larger expansive building, but it's broken into parts, like I was mentioning. So you could see an element here and then it has a varied rough line. So instead of having a big boxy shape, you have a flat roof here, then you have a like shed, really it's a gable. And then you have all these, sorry, you have a mouse very sensitive, I guess. Okay. So then you have these archways to break up the mass and areas. And then the rough line bumps up, well, this is an element, this is an element. This is another, and you could see that they've broken up the mass with varied rough lines and some simple forms, there's not a lot of planes in the building because they couldn't construct buildings back then like that. This building on the right, bottom right, is the fire station San Clemente. You could see that they have sloped the building down on the sides to break up the massing. They have these sealed windows, that is a nice decorative detail. Some places we have wainscot to break up the mass, these massive doors that had an obvious function, and it should be noted that the main entrance of buildings had larger, there's an emphasis on the doorway where you have that entrance. Also, if you're going to have a tower element, it has a purpose, it's where to add emphasis. A lot of times when it's a simple building, it's the main entrance as well. And here, you could definitely tell there's symmetry involved in the Marblehead coastal design with the tower in the out, in the middle. And you could tell that the massing of the fire station build up to the middle, there's a spire. There, also I should mention that when you have decorative details, they should be scaled up to the size of the building. So if you have a light that is supposed to be dark skies compliant, so shielding the light and wrought iron. But you wouldn't have a little tiny light. If it's a big building, you'd have a massive light. A good example of that is the Starbucks building on Avenue de Pico. If you go and take a look at those lights, they're big for that part of the building that is taller. There's too many examples in the city of these little tiny lights on buildings, that should be much bigger. The building on the left is in Santa Barbara. Uh, Henry Lenny had put this in a presentation. He added this to emphasize that there's room for being whimsical with design and that we don't need to have cookie cutter design. There are places where we could be creative within the spirit of Spanish colonial revival. So you could see here, this isn't something that you see every day in the city. He showed you a tile that he wanted to encourage the idea of uniqueness within what is appropriate for the type of project. The design review process. Uh, I wanted to highlight that what requires designer view are projects that involve discretionary entitlement. Oftentimes that will be some type of non-residential building. It could be a project that is within 300 feet where a budding historic structure is in the architectural overlay. Historic structure itself. And then those areas where I had pointed out where Spanish pointer, Spanish or Spanish pointer Bible is required outside the architectural overlay, that those are some other examples. Now, I think what's easy to be mindful of is that if it's a planning commission type of project or city council, then that often will require a designer review subcommittee review before the decision-making body takes action on the project. If it's a zoning administrator type of review or staff, like staff waiver, then designer review subcommittee review is not required by default. The city planner will review the project and make a determination if the project needs findings, the design guidelines, for example. And if it does, then it does not require designer view. That determination is noted in the record. So there's clear record keeping going for that type of decision. However, there are times where staff does seek additional guidance, even if it might not be required. Staff could refer an item to the designer review subcommittee for advice, say as a new business type of item, that does happen. The rule of subcommittee is design, it is not a land use issue, like the use of a building. That is not their focus, it is only on design guidelines. There's also a look at zoning standards when it pertains to design. So like landscaping percentage of parking lot design, those are some examples. The subcommittee is an advisory body, so there's no decisions made. There is advice given to the applicant, the applicant does not need to follow the designer review subcommittee's recommendations. If they choose, they, even though the designer review subcommittee can ask to see the project again, the applicant can decide to move forward anyway, if they don't want to follow the designer review subcommittee's recommendations. However, that is factored in to the staff recommendation and overall the planning commission's consideration of the project. Does not happen often, but it is something that the applicant has the right to do. The rule of staff is why the recommendation based on our analysis of the design guidelines and the findings, recommendations are provided on design changes that improve a project's consistency with findings, if necessary. Strategies for review. We have some projects that come to staff and we open the plans and within five minutes, we can tell it has a lot of issues. It is nowhere close to approval because they do not meet the design guidelines, especially if they don't meet the zoning standards, it's apparent. And those projects take a lot of time for everybody. I try to emphasize to applicants, it's a team effort to get projects through the review process. We depend on the applicant to give us quality submittal and a quality project from the start. So they are recommended to consult with staff before they even submit an application so that we could try to get it close to the findings. And that doesn't always happen now. If we get a project that has a lot of issues, then it could take multiple, it could take multiple meetings to, just to, just one quick moment. So I I think that when you have a project like that, it's good to be mindful of what can move a project along using the least amount of staff time. And and really the applicant's time, it saves them money to get it through the project process quicker. Henry Lenny, we had a good quality study, staff study session with him. And he made a point that in Santa Barbara, when you have projects like that, it's best it's best to focus on the big issues in the first meeting. If it's going to require multiple designer view meetings, then you should focus on the big picture, so massing rough lines like those larger themes I mentioned. And not get into where is the window? How big is the wrought iron? Are you using the right tile, those sort of details? It's not ready for that level of discussion. It can overwhelm an applicant and I think it's, it's worked well getting the applicant to find like the 80/20 rule, let's get the project mostly there and then have a discussion on the details. So I, that's, that concludes my presentation and now I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, Chris, we also have the, we've got the two guidelines, you did the general ones. And just for everybody's information, the Lenny guidelines get more into proportions of arches, the proportions of call, of the columns. And so it's, yes, it's subjective, but not quite as subjective as the city guidelines. So it's very beneficial to become at least conversant in both sets of documents. There's some great sketches on columns, how arches are proportioned, etc. And the two videos that Chris put into view before this meeting, if anyone had the opportunity are a good thing to see, so I think Commissioner Cosgrove, do you have a question there?
Yes, thank you.
Mic's unmuted?
Yeah. First of all, I just want to make a couple of comments, being new. I went through the Henry Lenny videos, both of them. They're long, but they're extremely educational and well, he does get drilled down into very specific things and I'm just, I'm, I think we should have links to that probably on our website, so applicants know about it at least, or have it. I know that his document is on there, but maybe some way that they could listen to him speak about it because he really brings it to life and explains the context and the reasons why certain things are important. And I thought it was extremely helpful. And then when I went through his guideline document, which is over 200 pages, everything really comes together, makes a lot more sense. And me as a non-architect came away with just a very good understanding of what this is. So for me, if applicants come into San Clemente for the first time and they're not aware of what our design guidelines are, these are really great resources for them to come up to speed. And I think there's no reason why they wouldn't understand it after reviewing all these things. This, to me, it's really important that applicants understand that the charm of San Clemente is in large part due to these standards and that they are important to us. And so to, so my question with all of that is when, when we went through our confirmation process and our interviews with the city council, I picked up on one very important theme, which is, hey, commissioners, we don't think it's a good idea for you to drill into design details from the dais, like when a project comes to you, at that point, you know, that should be baked, it should be done. And I think that makes a lot of sense, I think that these projects are expensive. Not just from the staff standpoint, but from the applicant standpoint, these architects are expensive, time is expensive, land holding costs are expensive. And by the time it gets to us, we really ought, it really ought to be vetted and it really ought to be in compliance. And my, so my question is, what is the process for that? So that we don't need to get into the nitty gritty, what are all, is there a way, Chris, that you could kind of outline for me as a new one, a new guy? How does an applicant who's not familiar with San Clemente design guidelines? What are the steps that they go through before they get to the planning commission? So that we could rely on those steps, that process, so that when it comes to us, we are looking at the major things, the zoning compliance, the general plan compliance, you know, any exceptions, those kinds of big issues, big themes, and not have to worry about a lot of the weeds, details down in the weeds, which are important. They make a difference. And so how do we be successful in our role? So that we know that before it gets to us, all those details are really discussed in detail with the applicant and and worked out.
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner. There, I think is quite a it's quite a process, starting out as a planner, when you start, you have this perception of this process and how it works and it's actually quite different. So our role as planners is to guide the public before the project is submitted to the best extent possible. Is to guide the public before the project is submitted to the best extent possible. It's in the public interest to utilize staff resources, which are limited right now. We are short staffs. But we try our best to help people that reach out for our help. We are, we've shown you some recent tools that we're working on to improve our information sharing process. Like that mapping tool. Uh, the idea of putting the link to the study session is great. The video is on our YouTube site, but we can make it a little easier to get to. So I think first it's sharing information. And encouraging people to take advantage of that when we interact with them at the counter. I do think that. That people that do projects in the city are often familiar with the architects that. Are more successful in understanding these design guidelines. And we'll take a look at projects that have been approved. And that there's a word out on the street, uh, what. What their experiences were, just like if you go to an auto mechanic. You hear how well of a job they've worked on people's cars. So, um, those are my first thoughts. Uh, I also. We do have a preliminary application process. So when a project is. More complicated and there's some. Let's just say that you could go in a lot of different directions with the project. And someone is looking to narrow down a proposal that may. Be most successful in getting through the process and a win-win for the community. We encourage them to take advantage of that preliminary application. What that involves is going through our, what's called the DMT process. That's engineering, building, planning, different disciplines that work out technical issues. Give people a heads up on things like fire authority requirements. And also people could go to designer review subcommittee before they pursue a project. So that is another tool.
That's a good idea. Um, I didn't know they could do that. That, that, that should be encouraged. One of the things I found useful in the Henry Lenny video was the lessons learned. Kind of approach he would take when he was reviewing some of the projects, in particular the McDonald's on Pico. And he would kind of look and say, here, these are the parts about it that are really great, but these are the parts about it that aren't so great. To me, I learned a lot when he's like picking it apart, like why that, that you don't do this, do that. And, and so to the degree that, um, we can really get those out to people in advance. I think it's really useful because I, um. Believe that the charm of the city really lies in these standards and the way we have been successful at getting. You know, these designs incorporated into real projects. It makes a huge difference and. So I just want to commend you for your hard work and all the resources that are available. But my only feeling about this is that. We should not, as a planning committee, this is my point of view, not the rest, and just speaking for myself. We should not be sitting here at our level in a public hearing, doing the lessons learned with the applicant. That's not good for the applicant. It's not good for, um, us to get that, you know, a two-hour conversation about. A feature of a building. So my only request or my only, you know, question is. How do we move all those conversations up the chain way as far as advanced as possible? So by the time it gets to an approval, you know, a lot of, all those conversations have really occurred. And then we're really just, you know, going over the big issues. So I don't know how we, I don't, maybe you guys are doing that and it sounds like in a great degree you are. But I'm also hearing there are challenges and, um. Uh, I just think anything that the staff can do, this design subcommittee can do. Working with the applicant ahead of time so that we don't get mired down in those conversations, I think is the, should be the goal. Now, that's just my personal opinion, based on what I heard from the council when they appointed us. And looking at these guidelines, just a lot, there's just a lot there and they're great. But it just sounds like we need to make sure those conversations are happening early. And I'm sure they are, but.
Yeah, one thing I want to add is. There's not a lot of projects that get denied and there's a reason. That, that's kind of what I was getting at when you start out as a planner, you don't really understand. How things work. There's so much that goes in to the project review process. Before submittal and during the process that the planner is involved with and different staff. It is a team effort at staff to advise applicants. So we try to work with the applicant in, in like a team effort. Uh, takes a, a good project team.
Yeah.
Uh, to follow up with us. We depend on people. We send them a letter outlining in comments. Some people don't get back to us for two months. That, that, and then no one really highlights that when there's a complaint. Um, yeah, it's more like this process took too long. Well, it's a little more nuanced than that. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes and. Our priority is to serve the public, get, get good customer service. Uh, but we try to work out the issues, find some solutions. So that when it goes, the project goes to the commission, it's ready for approval, like you're suggesting. So point taken. I'm sure there's some other things that we can do. Um, you know, I like the idea of putting the link on there and, uh, we're open to other suggestions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jump in to Chris on this, um. The only project you, you hear we don't want to be designing on the DAS is this is a two-way street. Um, there are clients and architects that have a, um. Image of what their project is and so forth is not necessarily in line with what the city is. And up through this process, um, both designer view and staff, it's all recommendations. And we're trying to educate them to understand the city's view, not our personal views, but the city's view of. What the project should be. And as Chris said rightly, the projects can be moved along by the applicant. So there will be projects that, uh, get through that, uh. They may not want to follow the, the directions typically happens with corporate, um. Uh, applicants who have a corporate image and that's what they want. Well, they've got to adapt to meet the guidelines. Now, city council has the flexibility to. Uh, make some decisions that we can't.
Yeah.
Um, so it is a two-way street and it's, uh. Um, a labor of love. It takes a lot of time to educate some and we have architects in town who. Bring projects to us that are ready to go.
Yeah.
You know, look at it, wow, that's great, super. Uh, I see Adam, you've got your. Mic unmuted. Um, Chris, could you take off your screen share so I can see all the, um. There we go. Now I can see.
Chair Randall, I would just real quick, before Adam jumps in. I agree with you and I understand the corporate, um, issues with their identity and things like that. Um, what I would ask Chris is that, you know, I'm very supportive of these guidelines. I'm very supportive of all this work that the city has done to develop these guidelines. I see. I see the benefit of it as well. And so to the degree you do get applicants that are ignoring you or don't want to push it forward despite these guidelines. I very much hope that the staff will point those out in their recommendations that where there are gaps. Where there is non-compliance, so that those of us that are feel strong about this can support that as well.
Very good, um.
Yes, you. Uh, commissioners, if I, if I can, uh, touch on a couple of points real quick, um, the first, uh. Process, um, my apologies. Uh, first about process, uh, you know, it is staff's goal to. Provide as much information to the applicants, uh, before, before they, their project starts utilizing. Um, other staff or, uh, um, subcommittee or commission or council time. Um, so that is something that we, we, we do spend, um, a goo, a good amount of time, uh, on. However, once a project starts going through the process. There are a few things that, um, the planning commission may want to consider, um, in terms of. Um, maintaining a perspective on the, on the application as a whole. And, you know, it's, um, in the past, uh, i- in my experience, it's, um. I've noticed that there are some, some aspects of projects that the planning commission as a whole will, um. Uh, may want to discuss, uh, which have been quite discussed previously. In like the designer review subcommittee. Um, and to the extent that the commissioners can, I would invite all of them to watch the designer review subcommittee meetings. And that way, when those projects come to the, uh, the planning commission as a whole. They're aware of the, 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 the previous discussions about those particular projects. Um, are, uh, in the, in the binders that the planning commission has provided. We have a tentative future agenda, which, um. That if you, if you track it, it will, it will provide information on projects that are, that are upcoming. That are scheduled for designer view, then planning commission, uh, things of that nature. Um, just so that, um, it's, it's not, it, it doesn't always have to be. Um, that the planning commission sees a project a week before it's presented. Um, when really there's quite a bit of discussion occurring, uh, on the backend. Um, and then as far as, you know, staff's, uh, attempts to work with, with individuals, uh, to streamline the process. We do have a staff waiver process that, um, allows for city planner determinations of particular. Um, particular projects that, uh, meet, meet certain and specific criteria. Um, uh, and we'll, we'll call them, they, they, they require a relatively low level of review. Um, those staff waivers are also included in your, um, planning commission binder, um, uh, for the, for the, uh, commission's review. Um, so there, um. The, the TFA, the tentative future agenda will discuss the upcoming designer review subcommittee meetings. Um, but that is a standing meeting, uh, that can be accessed on, uh, the city's YouTube channel. And if the commission would like information about, uh, when that meeting occurs. Uh, I'd be more than happy to have, uh, staff send you, um, uh, information about it. Uh, so that you can place it on a calendar, uh, with reminders.
Thank you. Adam, any other comments? I think, uh, Commissioner McCann had his first introduction to design review, uh, last week. And I think saw, um. What we do and, uh, what we try to do and, um, he got an example of a project that, uh. The applicant had not paid attention or even, uh, attempted to follow the design guidelines. And that's usually a first question we ask, uh, an applicant at design guideline, at design view. Is, uh, can you explain how your project complies with the design guidelines? And in this case, um. The response was, well, we haven't. So, um, it's due to come back and, uh. That's, um, a good thing for everybody and they were told of the guidelines prior to, uh. Even starting the project when they first came into the city and did their, uh, due diligence on requirements. Uh, any other comments, um, from commissioners? Well, we've got, uh, it could be a long meeting, uh, of the, uh, commission or, uh, quick. Um, so let's. I heard something in the background, but, um, we will reconvene at seven for the meeting. And Chris, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to point out in addition to some projects where they don't give thought to the guidelines. There are some architects that are aware of the guidelines and choose to ignore them. And they are insistent that they are the Frank Lloyd Wright of architects. Their project is awesome. And it is not awesome. It is not close to the design guidelines. Those are the projects that cost money, take a lot of staff time. And are probably the projects that the city council hears about. But there's a vast majority of projects that we work with applicants to get through the process quickly. That aren't really highlighted, uh, outside of staff. And so I just want to emphasize that staff really does try to help the public.
That's really what we're all here to do. Uh, I see no other, um, microphones unmuted other than Adam. Did you have one final comment or?
Nope, uh, as soon as we go on a break, uh, I will let IT know and we can, uh, reconvene at seven.
Very good. Uh, see everyone at seven, ten minutes. I see seven P M. On my computer uh. Monitor uh so uh everybody could um. Activate their video so we know everybody's. I think all we're waiting on is uh. There's Commissioner Prescott for a moment. I T. Are we ready to uh start?
Meeting is live, Chuck.
We are live?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to call um the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Francisco, California, Wednesday, August eighteenth meeting to order. Um I have not asked anyone to do the pledge of allegiance, so I will take that on myself this evening. Um please uh mute your mics. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh Adam, will you be reading the uh role or will Cecilia do that tonight?
I will take care of that, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Camp is absent from tonight's meeting. Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner McCaughan.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler, uh she is absent from tonight's meeting. Chair Pro Tem McCon.
Here.
And Chair Crandall.
Here.
Um the next item on our agenda is a special order of business and we have none. We have two sets of minutes to um approve this evening. Um. One is the minutes of the regular study session of the city of San Francisco. August fourth, do we have revisions or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh we have a motion by Cosgrove and uh a second by Lefler. Uh we have a moment here. Uh Commissioner McCaughan.
Yeah.
No, I I thought I made the motion.
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh let's get that corrected on the minutes. Um uh and we have a motion and a second. Um take a roll call vote. Um Commissioner Cosgrove.
Yes.
Commissioner McCaughan.
Aye.
Commissioner McCann.
Aye.
Commissioner Prescott.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is an I also, so we have a vote of five uh. It is unanimous. Um the second uh set of minutes is. The regular meeting of the uh planning commission August fourth minutes. Do we have um? Any uh requests for changes or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by uh Commissioner Prescott.
Second.
Uh second by Commissioner McCaughan. Um Commissioner Cosgrove.
Yes.
Uh Commissioner McCaughan.
Uh aye.
Commissioner McCann.
Aye.
Commissioner Prescott.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. Um the next item is oral and written communications. Uh. Uh Adam or Cecilia, did we receive any uh oral or written communications? That do not pertain to the projects uh being viewed tonight.
We did not receive any oral communications or written comments um generally. Um we have some for items that are agendas.
Yes, correct. Okay. Uh the consent calendar, we have none, so that brings us to public hearings. And our first item is three twenty-nine Avenue de Cabrillo Cultural Heritage Permit twenty-three-seven-four. Minor exception permit twenty-one oh oh one and historic demolition permit twenty-one oh nine-five. Gonzalez resident addition and uh David Correo is presenting tonight.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission. I am going to share my screen. I T. Can I get uh permission? Uh there you go. All right, so the uh project is located at three twenty-nine Avenue de Cabrillo as mentioned. Uh within the residential medium zone and coastal zone overlay district. Uh also within the coastal exclusion order area, uh which means that a review by the coastal commission will not be required. Some uh brief background here about the property. It was built in nineteen twenty-six and listed in the uh city's. Historic resources list for its association with the Spanish uh village period of development. Its architectural style uh being Spanish colonial revival. And its association with Ole Hanson. Ole Hanson lived on on this property at one point. Uh building permit history, the most notable uh change to this property is the porch enclosure that was done nineteen forty-seven. We can see that to the image uh to the right where the uh window assembly to the right of the entry exists. Uh there were other minor improvements that didn't significantly uh change the property. Further background, uh the property does have an existing Millsack contract, so today we are not reviewing. Or considering uh entering into a Millsack contract. That was done back in uh twenty-ten, so it was approved. Uh improvements under that contract were due in twenty-twenty last year. Uh the the previous owner had some difficulty completing all the improvements. Uh and in the transfer of the ownership, the new owners are here today to propose uh completion of all improvements. So they understand the the rights and obligations of the Millsack contract. So again, the request includes three separate permits. First one is a minor exception permit for the continuation of illegal not conforming setback. Uh a cultural heritage permit for the one-story addition uh at the rear. Uh completion of the Millsack improvements. And a historic demolition permit uh for the partial demolition of a detached garage. Uh which is what's triggering a review uh and approval by city council. So tonight, the planning commission will be making a recommendation uh to to the city council. So the project goes reviewed by the cultural heritage subcommittee. Uh overall, it did support the project with some design changes and additional. Uh information for staff to consider. Um the the main goal here was to improve consistency with the design guidelines and the Secretary of Interior standards. Uh the applicant did address all recommendations and we have plans within the staff report that reflect that. Uh and there is a memo from GPA, the the applicant's historic preservation consultant. Uh explaining how each uh recommendation was addressed in detail. So here's a site plan in blue is the original uh existing home. Highlighted in yellow is the rear addition. And we see the the proposed uh continuation of the uh non-conforming setback here. You guys can see my arrow. And then highlighted in red is the the partial or the downsized garage. Uh which will be uh to accommodate a future E D U. Now dive into that further. So again, one of the items is the continuation of a non-conforming setback. Currently, we have the existing home at three feet. Six inches from from the west side property line. So the proposal here is that the the rear addition uh maintained a non-conforming uh setback as well. Um at the cultural heritage subcommittee, uh we were asked both staff and the applicant. To uh reach out to the neighbor next door uh where this not performing setback would would exist. Uh for feedback. And to my knowledge, uh they did reach out. Um and I'll let the applicant's team uh speak on that item further after my presentation. We were also asked to provide clarification on what continuation means. So after reviewing the code, um well, the question was. Uh does continuation mean uh allowing the existing non-conforming uh setback to continue? Or allowing an extension of the existing non-conformity to to expand along the property line? And after reviewing the code, uh we found that both are actually allowed. So the applicant's proposal is consistent with 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 code. Uh we were also asked to revise plans to show the neighboring uh building footprints. To allow the building division to review that. Uh we did review it with the building division. And they supported it, uh reviewed it against uh fire standards and distance requirements. Uh and staff also finds that privacy and sun exposure uh will be maintained as uh guided in the uh design guidelines. So another item is the partial garage demolition. Again, this is uh what requires the historic demolition permit. And to be reviewed by city council. Uh this is actually uh an effort to satisfy Millsack item number nineteen. Which basically says that the garage, the detached garage uh must be restored, expanded, or demolished. Uh here, the applicant is choosing to partially demolish. Um there was also a question during the cultural uh heritage subcommittee. Uh if the partial demo met the intent and in reviewing it with the historic preservation consultant. Uh we did determine that it is meeting the intent of that Millsack item and and we do support it. Uh so again, that downsizing of the garage is to accommodate a larger uh rear yard and a future E D U. So what we're seeing here is a conversion of existing garage space into an accessory dwelling unit. Uh so we do find that the project is consistent uh with the Secretary of Interior standards. Um and then we have another memo from the uh consultants as well within the report, uh which explains how each uh standard is being met. Uh staff is recommending that we add two uh conditions of approval uh that that were uh overlooked. Um I'll read them here. The partial demolition of the detached garage shall be completed. In conjunction with an approved and issued building permit which allows a partial garage demolition. And conversion of garage space into an accessory dwelling unit. Uh and second, in the event the use of the accessory dwelling unit terminates. The property owners shall restore the property's current level of compliance uh with parking requirements. So the the motive here is to prevent a situation where the uh garage is is demolished. Um and the E D U not be provided. Uh which then would mean that the parking uh condition will be worsen. Uh given that currently, right now, we have a single car garage, uh which is non-conforming with code because code requires two parking spaces. Last item here is the sidewalk. Uh the applicant is proposing Ole Hanson pavers uh on the sidewalk adjoining the property. Uh there is a uh condition established by the engineering division, uh which uh requires that the uh. For an ADA compliant sidewalk, uh which would mean that there's would be a jog into the driveway. for an ADA compliant sidewalk, uh, which would mean that there's, would be a jog into the driveway. Uh, to the right, you see an exhibit side-by-side comparison, uh, with the sidewalk highlighted in blue. To the left is, uh, the sidewalk without the easement, and to the right is the sidewalk without, uh, with the easement. Um, the applicant is requesting tonight to have the, uh, Planning Commission consider removing that condition, uh, so they can keep that sidewalk off the property. Uh, staff has no concerns with that sidewalk easement, given that there, there won't be any loss of historical integrity, uh, after reviewing the historical survey of forms that we have for the property. Uh, and I do have, uh, I believe we have Zach Ponson from Engineering available too, if any questions, uh, come up regarding this. So in conclusion, uh, staff finds that the project is consistent with design guidelines, general plan policies, the Secretary of Interior Standards, the Mills Act contract, uh, as well as with the development standards, uh, with the exception of the reduced setback on the west side. Um, we are recommending that those two conditions mentioned earlier be added. Um, and further, we are recommending that Planning Commission recommend the City Council approve the project subject to conditions. And that concludes our presentation, and we do have the applicant's team available as well for any questions.
Uh, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Uh, good evening. I'm Rob Williams with Studio Six Architects. I'm also here with the applicant, David Gonzalez, and, uh, not really needing to make a presentation, I think Dave has done a great job. I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have. Other than that, uh, um, you know, you got any questions for me? I'm here to answer.
Okay, we will open it up for questions from the, uh, Commission. Um, Commissioner McCaughan, do you have any questions for the applicant or the staff?
I have a question of staff. And first is, why does the easement jog? Why does the easement just go straight across the driveway?
This is Zach Ponson with the Engineering Department. Uh, I think I can answer that question. Uh, easements for sidewalk purposes are required in order to be, for ADA compliance. So the sidewalk requirements for ADA compliance require a 2% cross slope towards the street or less. And, uh, the federal government and California state governments have all seen driver approaches generally to be non-ADA compliant. So with a discretionary project, uh, our Code 12.08 requires projects to, that are discretionary, to include an easement for sidewalks to go around the driver approaches, so that you can get that ADA compliance.
That's because of the driveway aprons there?
Yeah, the, the aprons itself are usually sloped anywhere from 10 to 16%, um, which often leads to, you know, obviously, uh, not handicap accessible.
My second question is, uh, number three, um, talks about partial demolition of a one-car detached garage. When you measure the width of the garage, at least it looks like the opening, it looks like it's about 20 feet. Is that our, is that our code, that a one-car garage is 20 foot wide? Because I could put both of my cars in that garage.
Yeah, uh, good question, Commissioner. The current, uh, single-car garage, it shares space with, um, I believe it's storage, and Rob Williams, you can confirm. Uh, is that, is that how that building is being shared, Rob Williams?
But that, the doorway, at least almost 20 feet wide?
Yeah, it's, it, it's, uh, right now, there's storage in the garage today. So the doorway, when you open it up, part of it is for the one-car garage, part of it opens right to the storage. So the space beyond that garage door is only a single-car space.
Okay, but if the storage wasn't there, it would be a two-car garage.
It would be, it wouldn't meet the city's standards for a two-car garage, minimum interior dimension, it would not comply to that.
Because of the door or because of the garage?
Because of the width and depth of the garage. Right, the width and depth of the garage does not meet city standards for a minimum two-car garage.
Okay, this, this, the city, this is for the city, this, does our city allow garage conversions?
Yes, for, for necessary dwelling unit, uh, we do. And that's consistent with, with state law.
Without replacing the, without replacing the garage requirement?
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
State law?
Correct.
Okay, but one of the reasons we give is to give expanded, we're giving up a garage and two parking spaces um, for expanded architectural, like landscaping, and an ADU, but that seems to be, that's the kicker, to allow it, because state law allows it. I don't, being an old planning commissioner, a garage conversion without replacement parking is like a no-no. And plus, this is a narrow garage, where one car can block. I mean, if, if there's a family in the front, a family or a couple in the back, you know, where are these cars gonna park? On the street, or they gonna line up in the garage? I mean, on the driveway?
That's a great, David, if you don't mind, um, I'll, I'll field this question. That's a great question, uh, Commissioner. The, uh, the laws regulating ADUs allow the conversion of an existing garage into an ADU. Uh, there are certain requirements that need to be met in order for them, uh, the applicants to not require the replacement of parking. In this case, um, th- those conditions have been met. Um, as the project sits currently, uh, the development sits currently, the applicants could come in with an application to convert the garage as it is currently, um, laid out, to convert it into an ADU. Um, it, the, the removal of part of this, um, structure, uh, is not, is not actually necessary to convert this into an ADU.
So anybody who has a garage can convert their garage into an ADU?
They, they can, uh, if they're within half a mile of a, of a transit center, then they don't have to replace the covered parking requirement.
By state law?
By state law, yes. This is, and this is recent, this is somewhat recent, uh, legislation that was, uh, became effective in 2019.
Yeah, I'd like to see a copy of that, because this is the, this is the only thing I like about it. Because that, it means we're gonna put all the cars out on the street.
Un- unfortunately, uh, there would, there will be parking impacts because of, uh, the state legislation. However, the, uh, city has adopted, uh, ADU regulations, uh, in compliance with state law, uh, that, that reflect that. So, um, there, there's, there's nothing about, there's nothing about that request that is necessarily, um, against either the city's code or the state law.
Well, the city's code only because they have to adopt the ADU requirements of the state.
We, uh, we didn't have to adopt them.
City, not that the city enjoys it, but because the city is, the state is forcing it down their throat.
Uh, well, I, uh, I understand your, I understand.
What is a, what is a transit center, or whatever you said? What's a transit center, a bus stop?
Yes.
Okay, so that means up here in Chilaga, where the bus stops, if I'm within what radius?
Half a mile.
Yeah. So I could have an ADU in my garage?
Uh, yeah, potentially, yes.
I don't like it, I know we have to do what the state says, but just because of that, I will vote no.
Okay.
Because I've lodged.
During discussion.
Yeah, okay, I, I think that's bad.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in, um, Mal, I'd like you to, uh, I'm, I'm a little concerned about, one, I'm in support of the project in its final, uh, configuration, but how we get there has gotten me a little concerned. Right now, the garage is, um, on the property line, so it's a legal non-conforming, and by the size, it's legal non-conforming. And the way it's being presented in the documents and in the staff report is, um, they wanna demo it, change it, prior to doing a, um, ADU. And my concern is, shouldn't, before they even start the project, get the ADU approved so the existing garage walls can remain in their existing location? They can have the ADU, uh, in which case, then, we don't have to worry about the driveway going all the way to the back. They can do their landscaping and block access to it. But I'm very concerned that, uh, it seems like we're, because the ADU, and I don't think we can even, um, do a discretionary review when it is a historic house and a garage conversion. I think the state doesn't give, I'm not aware of an exception for that. So having this during our, this, uh, ADU part of our discretionary review is, seems a little awkward.
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I'll, I'll try to answer, uh, you know, whatever question i- is, is posed. I, um, I think first and foremost, I just, I just wanna confirm what, what Adam stated about ADU law. Um, and also, um, you know, understand, express understanding about Commissioner McCaughan's concern regarding ADUs. Um, but it's important to note that, uh, the legislation that came from the state is incredibly strict regarding the ADUs. Um, the, the code that was adopted by the city is actually, um, as, as, as strict as we can be as a city. Um, it goes further, um, than the state's, uh, the state's requirements go. Since we've, we've done as much as, as we can as a city with regard to ADU law, we're at the outside edge of what we can do, but the reality is that our hands are tied. Um, and we just don't have any discretion when it comes to ADUs. Any single-family residents in the state can, can really put an ADU in their backyard, even in their home, and parking is a minor concern, if, if no concern at all. As for your question about, um, the, the cart being before the horse and kind of the procedure of the entitlements, um, the, the process laid out, uh, here is appropriate. Um, you know, are there, are there different ways that this could be, uh, processed? Yes, potentially, um, but the process that's been laid out is, it, it, um, is appropriate. I will say also, the, the, the Commission always has its discretion when it comes to entitlements. Um, uh, saying no to an ADU under state law can expose the city to litigation. So I should just, I should just note that, this is, um, very, very strict legislation from the state, which does.
It doesn't, it doesn't meet our parking requirements for a two-car garage?
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly right, it doesn't.
And there's more than adequate space, there's more than adequate space on this piece of property to put a garage and an ADU?
Yeah, so that's exactly right. Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. Eight, ADUs often do not meet parking requirements, and the state legislation has expressly preempted local parking requirements. It's, it's in the law, it's just expressed that we can't even look at parking. It's a bad deal for single-family neighborhoods, and it, and it does, it does have the potential of turning them into more multifamily, but, uh, we cannot require replacement parking even where it's possible onsite. It's just not allowed under the state legislation.
So then you just can claim ADU and you don't have to fulfill your parking requirement?
As long as you're building an ADU under specific circumstances.
Well, within, uh, within, what'd you say, a mile of a transit center, any bus stop?
Uh, yeah, I think it was a half-mile. Um, there are certain, yet, there are specific circumstances under state law where if an ADU is constructed, there's no requirement.
I think, you know, appointed officials, you know, uh, Design Review Board members, Planning Commission members can express their disdain by saying, you know, the state might be doing some overreach here. I really, I object, you know, to that. Granny flats are a bad, you know, situation. It allows this property owner to make more money if they rent it out and create a parking problem for the city. And there's more than enough space to accommodate both parking of cars, of a garage and an ADU, if that's their priority. Because we're letting them expand way far back into their backyard. What are we getting for it? Where's the shake to the city?
Well, Commissioner, uh, McCaughan, I will, uh, just say that, um, uh, maybe, uh, we can, um, probably move into deliberations, uh, to complete that discussion. Um, but as, as the city, uh, attorney, uh, mentioned, the, uh, the application of an ADU is not discretionary, and in this case, it is, it is part of the application only because the, um, the property owners have informed us of their intent to convert this particular, um, portion of the property into an ADU, and by doing so, has requested the, um, the alleviation of the, uh, onsite parking, um, which would be granted, um, uh, as, as a, as, uh, in, in a by right fashion, um, uh, as, as part of this application. Um, the, the lack of, uh, you know, we've conditioned the project to require that it does become an ADU. There are building permits required for that, uh, particular use, and they, they will need to, to meet the city's requirements for ADUs, but the, the, the use of the property as a, uh, an ADU in the future is, is really not part of this, um, application. Um, however, um, some of your comments did, uh, lead towards, um, uh, the, the modification of the way that the site is used. Um, and I, I think that those might be some, some more valid comments, uh, in, in the Commission's deliberations.
And, um, Adam and, um, Mal, that was my concern. Wouldn't this problem all go away if they pulled their ADU permit just with no discretionary review right up front?
Well, I, I think their, their options are, they can either leave the garage as it stands today.
In which case, they have to leave their landscaping and leave access to it.
Oh, correct. Um, that would, um, that would require that they, they, they would still need to comply with the, uh, Historic Property Preservation Agreement conditions. I believe it was Number 19 that required them to either, uh, restore, expand, or demolish the garage. They, they still need to do something to the garage. However, let's just, uh, for argument's sake, let's just say that for now, they, um, they left the garage as it was, and they went on with the rest of their proposal. The, the results from that would be potentially that they could come back, restore the garage, um, in its current state, and then apply for a non-discretionary application to convert the entire garage as it is today into an ADU at any time. Since we know what their plan is, that this is staff's attempt to, uh, utilize the, to really streamline, uh, two aspects, uh, of, of, of their desires for the property. One being, develop an ADU while complying with the Mills Act contract requirements, uh, to deal with the garage, um, as, at the same time that they're proposing in addition to the, to the home. But there's nothing, that, if this project was never proposed, they could go and get an ADU at that property in the garage in its current configuration, not replace the parking.
Okay, um, when we get to discussion, we can do that, Commissioner Prescott?
Thank you. Uh, I was noticing, David, you said that you were going to talk about ADUs, but I noticed that this property backs up to zero property line, and since the intent is to put short-term rental, you know, low-income housing, this would be someone's residence, and it's up against the property line. Can you address that with ADU?
Yeah, so I can give two answers. The first one is, uh, the code does allow accessory, uh, buildings under, I think it's 450 square feet, to be up to property line. Um, and also, when, when it comes to an accessory, the future accessory dwelling in a conversion, uh, you can have your garage, uh, up to property line and convert that space into an ADU without, um, having to meet required setbacks.
So the, the historic side of this piece of property is? So the, the historic side of this piece of property is that there is a garage there. There is not an apartment there. And what is the height limit for an apartment? Can it go two stories?
A height for an ADU?
Mm-hmm.
That would require a discretionary permit, just for the height.
So, so that, so the owners could come back for that and put another ADU on top of an ADU?
They, they would require, uh, um, they would require a discretionary application to take that that current building and, and the building proposed, um, uh, beyond sixteen feet in height. So, uh, there may not be a, uh, there may not be a uh, an application process. Well, the ADU, I, I I don't think that they could have two standalone ADUs on this property. They could have an, uh, a junior ADU, but that would have to be, um, that would have to be connected to the main house.
You could have a two-story ADU, though.
I, I mean, potentially, uh, but they wouldn't be able to develop two stories without another discretionary review. And at that time, then, then things like setbacks and especially being right on the property line could be taken into account uh, as far as the, the impact to surrounding neighbors.
And what would be the impact to the family that's renting the ADU being up against the property line and to the family behind the property line? How is that addressed?
Uh, are, are we talking about any residential?
Safety, safety, you know, you're up against a property line. There's, there is no setback. Um, and you know, we, we were looking to the neighbors at the three-foot-six-inch side, the side setback as far as their opinion. What's the opinion at the setback at zero property line? As far as those neighbors?
Uh, is this, is this for a potential second story on, on?
Uh, just a, just a potential ADU. It's a garage now, uh, uh, our family doesn't live in that garage now, but if you convert it to an ADU, what would be, do you, do you need to have an, uh, you know, weigh-in by the property behind the ADU? Or is it just a given?
Um, no, essentially, no. The state laws and our adopted, uh, municipal codes related to ADUs allow for a garage conversion that is, um, located right up to the, to the setbacks right now. So there, there, there would be as far as the land use of it being for, uh, uh, independent rental, that aspect would not be something that the staff would review for a, for discretionary purposes. But as far as the buildings massing, if they, if they were to propose additional, uh, an additional floor on top of that building, that would require, uh, a, a design review. Uh, part because it's, it's, uh, it's a historic property, um, but then the addition of any, any height over sixteen feet would require a conditional use permit. Both of those being the planning commission, uh, reviews.
I would like to go back to the historical nature of the Ole Hansen. Is there any other property in San Clemente that currently has ADU on their property? An Ole Hansen property? Or is this the first?
No, there's been, there's been a few more, uh, that have gone through the ministerial process. Um,
Are they also at the zero property line?
I don't recall.
Would this be the first one, you think, that would be at, uh, an apartment that would be on the zero property line?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. We, we do know that conversions have occurred on historic properties. But as far as setbacks on, I wouldn't be able to say.
Um, uh, this is Audrey von Erns with GPA Consulting. Uh, Commissioner Prescott Lothar, I just wanted to, to clarify, um, you, you did say earlier that the garage is, uh, the historic portion of the property. Just wanted to clarify, uh, that it was actually constructed a little bit after, um, the historic portion of the property and is outside of the period of significance. Um, but the intent of the ADU conversion is to actually, um, meet the Mills Act requirement of either um, demolishing, restoring, or rehabilitating the structure. Um, they did have a structural engineer investigate, um, perform an analysis of the property, uh, of the garage specifically, um, and it was not favorable. So the ADU attempt is to downsize the, the garage and actually make it more compatible in terms of design with the historic portion of the residence. Um, because it was constructed much later, uh, in mid nineteen forties. Um, you know, typically a detached garage really mimics the original building. Um, so this one has a hip roof, um, or a gable, side gable roof, cross gable roof. Um, but the actual garage is hip roof. Um, so, you know, you can tell from those little signs that it wasn't original, so it's not the historic portion of the property. But because the entire property is designated as historic, it does also comply, it does have to, it, it can follow the historic building code. Um, so by retaining the existing walls, you're still, um, uh, I guess, let me go back up to the, the purpose of the, the ADU is actually seen as a really favorable approach to preserving, um, the history of properties and reusing garages that might be defunct, such as this one. Um, but still.
That's an interesting opinion. I might disagree with you on that. Uh, since the garage was not part of the original history of the house, is there any reason then to not move the garage three and a half feet to comply or five feet to comply? To bring it away from the zero property line? Since you're going to be, um, somewhat demolishing the garage, would you not just bring it up to code?
Can I step in on this one? Let me step in on this one. Um, so Audrey is right. The garage is, was not part of the historic house. The garage itself, um, is non-conforming, but we're not dem- demolishing more than fifty percent. So one of the things that the code allows that if a structure itself is not, uh, demolished or reworked more than fifty percent, it could stay in its existing location. So that's why we had the engineer come out and say, how much of this can we sur- can survive and how much needs be? So we're below the fifty percent threshold. That's also why it is smaller. Um, it's a very, fairly small ADU. Um, and essentially it would either be tore down completely or repurposed into the ADU and architecturally tied into the Ole Hansen-style house that's there. So we felt this is probably the, the best approach to, uh, the property itself, but since we're moving less than fifty percent, we're allowed to keep, based on the city code, the structure where it currently is.
If you hadn't mentioned the ADU in the findings here, probably would have never brought it up, but since you did, and you actually never really mentioned that you might just tear the whole thing down and not do anything with it, I might have a different opinion. But to put a potential family in a zero property line doesn't seem wise, and I would prefer to see, you know, the, um, three and a half feet or five feet away from, I think the, the normal setback in the rear is ten feet. And there's no way you can reach in?
Five feet on its own.
On, it from the rear side, five feet on each side, but on the rear, isn't it ten feet?
The, the setback is five feet.
Five feet.
Right.
And it wasn't part of the original house. So it seems like that fix could be done now.
I have a question. Uh, I think, um, uh, Adam, uh, could you answer, uh, Commissioner Prescott's last question?
Yes, Commissioner, just so I'm clear, can you, um, can you repeat that last question?
I was curious, the garage is not part of the original structure. It was put in later. And so in my mind, it's not part of this discussion. It's on its own, separate. And to bring it up to actual code, it could be, if you're going to demolish it, partially demolish it, could you not trench it to where it be not a zero property line?
Um, I actually, I, I, I think that, you know, that's a very valid question. Uh, but then we would actually be coming into issues with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Um, part of the reason why this works is because it's not historic and you're downsizing, downsizing the garage, so it's not impeding on the historic residents. If you're moving it closer, um, then you're going to come into issues with the effects on the character of the existing residents, because it really is a small lot. Um, and there's not much of a setback as the, uh, currently, um, so.
Except you do have the, you have the patio there that I see that's different from the patio that's originally there now. So you are, you're making changes already to that area. It just seems like you could, you could use that space or maybe make the master suite a little smaller on that side to, to bring the, this garage, to bring it up to code and to move it away from a property line because you brought up an ADU. And so I'm, I'm envisioning a, and a apartment there that's a zero property line. And it just, you know, codes are there for a reason, and it just, um, seems like that would be somewhat unsafe. And it would intrude on the property behind, as, I don't know what's behind that property, if it's a another single-family unit or apartment, but it's right up against the property. And it's not a garage, it's a family moving in.
So, uh, Karen, Karen, let me ask a few questions that might clarify some of the things you're talking about. Um, this question is for staff. Uh, the architect said that, well, we're demoing less than fifty percent of the structure, so therefore we can, um, we don't have to comply with the code. But it also talked about alterations. So he's demoing, let's call it, I'm gonna make it up, forty-nine percent, saving fifty-one percent. But based on the structural engineers' report, the fifty-one percent was garbage. It would need extensive rehabilitation to make it safe. So it seems like they're kind of demoing and altering or rehabbing a hundred percent of the structure. So does that then still allow them to not bring it up to code?
Uh, Rob, if you can confirm, but my understanding is that the reduction is, is happening uh, less than fifty percent, and they're doing, all they're doing is just aesthetics, cosmetic work uh, to the existing, which, which they can do, uh, per code without having to bring it into conformance.
The structural engineers' report says it's garbage.
Well, he says portions of the place is garbage. No, I don't think he actually used the word garbage, but, um, he went out there, a lot of the roof area, that's why we, if you've noticed on the plans, there's a section that is called out for a, um, to restore a wall. Part of the, the roof itself is being ripped out. The total calculation, the city calculation of how much of the walls and the massing and, uh, alterations are done, we've done all the calculations for the city based on the structural engineers' recommendations of what needs to be replaced and what we plan on tearing out as far as the walls go to meet that, and we meet the, the, we're below the fifty percent threshold. That's one of the reasons why we felt, well, since we're below the fifty percent threshold, let's convert it into a, instead of turning the entire garage down, which we could have, um, is, is turn it into a small ADU and maintain the setbacks that are currently there based on the city's regulations as far as fifty percent. So we meet or exceed what the city is required based on their definition and base our, on our structural engineers' recommendations.
The, I, I read the structural engineers' report, and I don't know what portions applied to the portions that were being saved and the portions that were being demoed. But it talks about really, really, really non-conforming substandard framing, no connectors, partially deteriorating footings. I don't know if the, all these conditions are are miraculously exclusively in the part that's being demoed, but I don't think so. So I guess for David, do you agree with their calculation about less than fifty percent?
I do.
And so what do you consider an alteration?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
What, what do you, could, you know, how, what has to be done? What, what makes the the threshold to be, you know, alteration versus not alteration?
I, it's, uh, if I remember the language in the code, it's any uh, change to, to framing, whether it's removal or just a simple change um, or replacement, removal replacement or alteration. It's a way that it's, uh, worded in the code.
Okay, so strengthening of the walls, adding connectors, and rehabbing footings and stuff like that, that's not an alteration?
Commissioners, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in here. Um, no, the, um, the, it, it, the code really aims to get at, um, alterations that, uh, change the either the, uh, configuration of walls or the location of walls. Um, people can reinforce the existing structural framework of walls and their foundations, because they're not, that, that doesn't materially change either the configuration. And by configuration, I mean the addition of doors and windows and, and things like that. Uh, structural, uh, uh, enhancements do not um, trigger the code, uh, in that way. And I do want to make one, uh, comment about the non-conformity of the garage. The, uh, the uh, proposal, and I believe the existing structure, um, is less than four hundred and fifty square feet. And, um, for accessory structures in this zone, um, they, as long as they're on the back half of the lot, they can go up to the side and rear lot lines. So it's not non-conforming because it's on the property line. It's non-conforming because it doesn't meet the current standards for a two-car garage.
Uh, let me, let me jump in real quick here. Uh, and Mal, um, this is exactly the discussion I didn't want us getting into about an ADU on this site. And, um, Cecilia, I want you to jump in, and Adam, if this applicant was to to come into the city tomorrow and asked to convert this garage into an ADU, would that be approved? Just, just the ADU on itself?
Yes, Chair Randall, the, the answer is yes.
Then why aren't we doing it that way?
Because, well, they, they want to make modifications to the structure that the ADU is intended to be in, so.
I think that's allowed, isn't it not? I mean, you're allowed to put porches on it and whatnot and dig in entries and.
Well, I, there's always the building permit that's, that's required to make modifications. Um, if they, if they did that process, they would come in, they'd get a, an app, a, a permit for an ADU in the, in the, um, current configuration of the garage. And then they would come back and do, um, another application for everything, everything that they're proposing tonight. Um,
Which we can't make discretionary decision on.
Yeah, well, while that. Yes, so while, while that process, um, um, may be easier to, um, comprehend between the administrative and discretionary aspects of what they're attempting uh, to, um, to gain approval for, um, that would be a, that would be an additional, that would, that would require additional work that, um, that the, that is harder on the applicant.
Well, certainly easier on us.
Well, I, I am aware of that, but, you know, we know who our customers are. Um, they, they are going to apply for, uh, a building in, in the context of, of your question. It, they would apply for two building permits. Um, and this process allows them to apply for one, and I, we, staff understands the complexity of this issue. Um, but our, our, our intent here is, is to provide a streamlined process for the applicant, understanding that the burden is, is on the planning commission too. Um.
Because my, my other question is would it even have to go to city council if they didn't this way?
It, it would if they are going to demolish any, any part of the. It, it would if they are going to demolish any, any part of the garage. That would, that requires a council approval of a historic property demolition permit.
Even though it's an A D U at that point.
That's, uh, that's a great question, um, I, I believe the answer would be yes. Uh, only because there, it, 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 it doesn't preclude their ability to have the prop, the, the structure as an A D U. The um, there, there's a, there's an over, overriding. Issue with this property and that is that it is historic. Um, so it wouldn't have an effect on, on their ability to have an A D U. It would simply um uh ensure that the historic, the, the historic resource is. Um, addressed appropriately in whatever construction project they um propose.
Okay, so my concern. And I'll, I'll, I'll save it for discussion purpose, because I, I'm saying that uh. If they want to do this without an A D U. Um, we would require them to have full garage restored in the form it's in currently. The only reason we're, oh, I, I see that we're allowing the garage to be um. Modified is it's an A D U. And.
I would say you're correct with that.
It's not an A D U.
It's not an A D U, it's a garage.
Uh, was that Commissioner Prescott?
It's, I'm sorry, it's, I, I was, it's a garage and it's a garage in poor shape. And it should be demolished and rebuilt.
It, it needs to be.
I'll, I'll allow our discussions to include staff, um.
But it is a garage, I mean, we're, we're really talking about a garage. They brought in the A D U and it's clouding the issue.
They make it an A D U, but we can't use that in a discretionary.
No, I mean, and if it ever is an A D U, I hope in the spirit of affordable housing that they rent it. You know, so that it is affordable housing.
Yeah, we don't have.
Um, but that's not, that's not here in this, in this room, but.
Is it a new face jumping in, uh, Commissioner?
But it's a garage.
Yeah, thank you, I have a, um. I don't want to take us off the garage, but I do want to talk about the easement. Um, but I want to finish the garage conversation because I'm just a little confused, um.
These, okay, um.
I, I just want to ask questions to understand.
Question to staff.
Yeah, is the garage? Is your understanding that the garage is gonna be an A D U? Or is it more, like, is the garage gonna be gone completely and some of it's gonna go to the courtyard? And some of it's gonna go to the A D U? Can you kind of describe what's going on with the garage and like big picture?
Yeah, big, big picture, so the garage is being downsized, uh, right with the understanding that in conjunction. With this conceptual approval, um, they'll be submitting a building permit. Right, that's proposing the A D U, right? And, and the downsides of the garage, so big picture. We are reducing it, uh, I believe part of the reason that they're doing that um is to give a larger rear yard space. Uh, right, because we have the addition going on at the rear, that's essentially reducing what they have already. Um, and on top of that, they're also trying to address the, the Mills Act uh improvement number nineteen.
Right, is it, so will it be a garage when it's all done, or is it that, is there gonna be a garage when it's all done?
No, so. Well, the process they would have to follow the steps is after. Uh, you know, theoretically, if it goes to city council and this gets approved as presented tonight. Um, their next step is to go ahead and submit a building permit. Which will then be clear that this uh downsized garage is in conjunction with the conversion. Of garage space into an A D U. If they were simply uh coming to the city and saying, hey, we're gonna demolish the garage. And keep it as a garage or storage space, so the city will not support it if the A D U is not included in that proposal.
Okay, so is a hun, is a hundred percent of the garage gonna be, it moved to an A D U?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to ask the applicant what their concerns about the easement that the city's been talking to them about, what's their concern with that? It sounds like that you, there's an objection to it, can you state what the nature of the objection to the easement is?
Yes, I'll be more than happy to, so we are obviously um. Going to rework the entire sidewalk and put the ole hands and pavers in it. Based on the city's uh requirement for an A D A where they're gonna have to have an easement that goes back. Behind the driveway apron. That sidewalk that, that easement that you talked about will die right into the side of the neighbor's property. The sidewalk will never, based on today, it could happen one day, but based on what's out there today. That easement that's gonna wrap around the backside of the apron will die right into the side of the neighbor's property. So essentially you're gonna have a sidewalk that goes nowhere. So the design we have is going straight across, it will connect with the sidewalk next to the neighbor. So it keeps a nice clean um access all in front of our property. Is it an A D A? Because, you know, technically A D A is gotta be level, you can't go up, up and down an apron, you gotta wrap around it. It won't be, but the, the A D A, the way they want it, it will since you wrap around a forty-five. And go since you four foot behind the apron and die right into the neighbor's property. With the hopes that one day, who knows when, that maybe that neighbor will do enough work. Will, would warrant it to connect it to their, to there and they'd have to do an easement. But it's gonna look kind of odd the way they're, uh, the staff.
How will somebody na- navigate then, once they're on that easement back to the sidewalk?
They have to go down the apron.
Okay, which doesn't sound, is, staff, is that right? Is he describing that correctly? And what's your thoughts on that?
Um, ultimately, our policy is to require a sidewalk along this frontage. And the next time the, the neighbor does a property improvement over fifty thousand dollars, they will be. Required to install a sidewalk. My understanding is that neighbor will also be discretionary due to the historic nature of this property. Therefore, they will also include the same condition that they will be required to grant an easement. There are waiver criteria for, for waving easements like this.
Okay.
Which usually due to topography and steep slopes or short distances to existing garages. This property technically doesn't meet any of those criteria. So while it will be a temporary um sidewalk that'll move along and then go. Up and around the drive approach and end into a fence or something. Ultimately, within time, there will be a continuous sidewalk um along that frontage and that's been. The city policy for well over a decade.
Does, doesn't zig back at some point? It just seems, I do hear what the applicant's saying, I, I'm sympathetic to him.
It'll end up coming back once the neighbor builds their sidewalk.
And, okay.
And so your option is it either dead ends into his drive approach flat like they want it. Or dead ends into the drive approach on the backside of it, so there's really no difference of, neither way, it's gonna dead into a drive approach temporarily.
What, what's?
Neighbor does her property, so it'll always, either way, it's gonna dead into a drive approach. And if anything, you want to come down a drive approach straight, not angle into it at the wing. The wing in an A D A, especially in a wheelchair, is extremely non-A D A compliant due to the cross grays at a weird angle. If you were to come across and in that easement and, and somebody were in a chair or a walker. You would then turn and come at the approach perpendicular, which would, in my opinion, a little bit safer than hitting an approach at an angle.
Is, for the applicant, is the, is the idea that you're gonna keep that driveway for parking? The driveway going away?
I'm sorry, the driveway's gonna be there, it's gonna have, it's uh long enough to have two um tandem parking spaces on there. Uh, um, obviously with easement, we'd have to do some shifting a little bit. Because, you know, certain depth of cars. But um, I understand what Zach's saying, you know, we're, you know, gonna be spending this money to do all these nice pavers. And then we're gonna have it wrap around the driveway and then die into it. There's a sidewalk already there that's in front of the neighbors next door. So nobody's ever gonna wrap around that because it's gonna be a dead end, they're always gonna go down that. That apron there to connect the sidewalks, so we're just gonna have this odd little wing here. That goes to nowhere and the, the property next door is not historic. So um, you know, it's one of those things that. The city manager generally on something like this, we can actually ask for a request for a waiver. For certain circumstances and we've actually have asked it for a few projects and gotten it. To me, this is like the poster child for asking for a waiver not to do what the public works is asking to do.
Uh, Commissioner Cosgrove, let me just jump in a question.
Okay.
And ask a question of uh Zach and Mal. Um, we take a liability anytime we waive uh an A D A. Requirement because it's enforced by the courts and nobody else, is that correct, Mal?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's correct, if the findings can be made though, uh, code-based findings, then the net liability is significantly reduced, but. Yeah, we always want to be cautious with A D A requirements, again, if there are findings, if they can be met, then we're generally okay.
Would Zach and uh Mal say? If we were to say, okay, the driveway, uh, the walkway can go straight across. But we still want that easement with a um deed restriction that. If in fact it continues on at some point, that the owner will put in the sidewalk um that complies.
It's not something we've done before, I'll, I'll kind of need to defer to Mal on that. Uh, but the problem with something like that would just be having to keep track of it, I guess, so when the neighbor comes in. We're gonna, you know, staff in twenty years, let's say, or five years or ten years, it probably won't be me.
Because I, I, I know um engineering will grant uh or request a uh. Restriction from people who have something made that may encroach on a sidewalk or public property. With the stipulation, if ever the city wants to widen the right of way, they gotta take it out.
Yeah, we, we have agreements and administrative encroachments for those situations, they're a little bit easier to find because they're attached to that property. What you're asking is, in the event the neighbor does their improvements worth fifty thousand dollars. And has to add that little triangle that'll help adjust this wing. Staff's gonna now have to remember to research the neighbor's property in conditions of approval. Which could be five, ten, twenty years down the road from now. My, my gut feeling is that it, it, it'll get forgotten because you won't see that sidewalk ready to be tied into. And so, just like normal sidewalk, we often see a sidewalk quote to nowhere. That is technically what we've been doing for a number of years and. When we, staff comes out in a number of years on the neighbor's property and sees the up and around ready to be tied into, it'll be obvious. If we do a deed restriction or something else, somebody's gonna have to somehow almost flag the neighbor's property. Put a warning on it somehow that, hey, if this sidewalk ever comes in, remember the deed next door. And so I, I think that would be pretty hard to, it'd be easy to miss, at least, you know, is, is for future staff.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Cosgrove, did you have any other questions since I jumped in on your time?
That's okay, yeah, um. So right now there's a sidewalk and it does go straight across. And it does, uh. But the apron, the driveway apron is, interrupts it, is that the current situation?
Um, yeah, correct, this prop, sorry, my lights went out, but my camera actually looks better. This property does not have sidewalk right now, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, the neighbor does have regular sidewalk. But it terminates at the P L.
Um, yes.
And I, I'm on my computer, I can check that with Google Maps.
Okay.
Um, but yes, the, so there is, there will be sidewalk, and it'll just be interrupted by the drive approach. And so what we're missing is an approximately. Four-foot triangle or rectangle on the neighbor's property to make this fully A D A compliant.
Right, right.
So it's just that one little triangle and, you know, it. Ultimately, it'd be great if somehow we can knock on the neighbor's door today and say, hey, can we condition this property to come onto your property, but. We've never done that either and I wouldn't.
I'm just wondering if we have an A D A compliant situation, if we, we, even with the easement, because what are we dumping them out on to?
Right now, you're still dumping them out onto the drive approach because it's gonna end at a fence or the neighbor's grass or improvements.
Right.
So either way, if you stop it short per their request, you're, you're dumping it out on the east end of the drive approach. With staff's policy and, and our recommendation is you'll have the up and around and it'll dump them off. On the west end of that drive approach. Sweet, but in our way, technically, you'll be able to come at it with a perpendicular. So if somebody in a chair or a walker or with foot drag or something else. Would be able to walk that way and actually turn ninety degrees and walk straight out to the street if they. Or towards that other sidewalk connection.
Are there any, are there any engineering options with that apron to? Reslope it in a way that would keep, you could just keep it as a straight sidewalk?
You know, it's a really good question, there are a number of options that we're somewhat looking into and doing rolled curves. And other options or depressed sidewalks, you will see in some areas of the town. Um, sidewalks that are depressed so that the apron is actually flat.
Uh huh.
Um, that would be a little bit of an issue here because technically. We would now be telling them to extend their wing into the neighbor to the west.
Mm-hmm.
Because the drive approach is still right up to that property line. And um, so that's not a problem because it's public right of way. Um, the problem with a depressed, what I call a saddleback drive approach is street water. And so ultimately, street water loves to go up those, loves to leave debris, dirt, trash. And technically, depending on the slope of the property, you could be introducing street floodwaters during a major storm event. Of a sidewalk and into people's properties. And so you have to look at the hydraulics of the street, prove that it won't do that. Um, I will say, some cities are doing this, I would say, hopefully they're looking into the science behind it before they're doing it. But we are looking at trying to do a, a sort of a half-height curve, which would, would a rolled drive approach. So there'll be slight depressions. Um, ultimately, that curve ends up sticking out into the street though, so the street would, the curve would have a. A meander through the, the frontage though. So that's some of the problems when you have a rolled curve that, they're, they're not six inches wide like a normal curve would be.
Yeah. If you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, obviously, ours is an historic property, the one to the right up, for us to work, we'd have to go up and around. And die into the side with the hopes that one day, they'll do something that will warrant them to connect it, I get that. The one to the left, which is a, a fairly new duplex that was built. Um, five, ten years, I'm not exactly sure how long ago it was built. When we, one of the reasons why we actually looked at trying not to do this is that right now. They don't have, they actually have a drive uh of sidewalk in front of that duplex. That goes down and up in their apron, so they don't have an easement that wraps around. So we're gonna be the only, technically, if we do this, A D A compliant, but we're gonna be like in an island.
And I think we looked at that neighboring house during D M T and, but, don't mind me, I'm actually on my own screen grabbing. Uh, street view of this, just to get, refamiliarize myself. Um, the neighboring property, you're right, did, is a rather new construction. I believe it was done prior to two thousand and thirteen when this. Uh, what I'll call the up and around sidewalk easement code was updated. So prior to two thousand and thirteen, we just made people put in straight sidewalks. And in two thousand and thirteen, it was up, the code was updated by council and. To include this idea that all discretionary applications should include uh a condition of approval for granting of an easement.
Ask a question, please. Okay, um, so Zach, to make it simple, what is engineering's recommendation for the sidewalk?
We would recommend um, uh, full sidewalk across the frontage and granting of an easement. Uh, four foot behind that drive approach and.
Okay, very good.
We can grant an easement along the whole frontage and that can save them a little bit of cost in terms of an easement preparation. We would, you know, not use a sidewalk easement the whole frontage obviously, but only use it across the drive approach. By that, I can actually technically. By that, I can actually technically, um, just do it via a grant deed that staff can prepare and they don't even have to hire a surveyor to prepare. An easement description.
Thank you, Zach. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, to move this along, let's, uh, close the question answer period.
Sharon, can I ask a couple of questions, please?
Uh, I'm gonna allow that during discussion.
Okay.
Just so we get this thing over. So let's open it for public comment. Were there any public comments, um, David or Adam?
There were no public comments received for this item.
Okay, so let's open it up for discussion and I will still allow, uh, uh, questions of, um. Staff and the applicant. Uh, so, um. Commissioner McCann, I'll let you start.
Okay, um, does the city have a minimum ADA size square footage?
Um, so size for the width of the sidewalk, you mean?
No, I'm sorry, not for Zach, for David or Adam. Does the city have a minimum ADA size square footage?
Uh, accessory drilling unit, um, right, is it a question?
Yes, ADU.
I believe we do have maximums. I'm not aware of any minimums. Uh, Adam, I don't know if you want to confirm, but we do have maximums depending on. Uh, the number of bedrooms, uh, the property owner is providing. I know.
Yes, that, that is correct.
I know the building code when it comes to, you know, having a, a feasible living space does have a minimum. Uh, living area square footage. Uh, I'm not sure what that number is.
But the, the building division did review this application. Um, with the understanding that this would be an ADU and, and they're supportive of the, uh, proposal.
Okay, thank you. What's the distance from the? You know, they've got the driveway, they show, they depicts two cars in it. What's the distance from the sidewalk to the fence slash gates? Or let, let me re-ask, let me ask the question a different way. What's the minimum depth of a? Of a parking space? Is it 18 feet or 20 feet?
Eighteen. Most cars are about 16 now, but.
For, it's a planning question. What, what, what do you guys consider the depth?
Uh, 18 feet.
Okay, so I would propose that. That fence, so, and how wide is the sidewalk easement, four feet?
Uh, four feet minimum, yes.
Okay, so I would propose that. From the back of the sidewalk easement to that fence. That it be 36 feet. Minimum and that that. Gate swing. Towards the rear of the home or the net of the gate swing, there's 36 feet clear. To the back of the sidewalk easement, assuming that we vote for the sidewalk easement. I, I, I do think, you know. I, I take issue with, I don't know where it's gonna go, but some of the statements by the consultants about, well. You know, we're gonna affect the historic resource if we move the garage closer. Well. You're already affecting it substantially by doing a significant addition to it. And additionally, if you. Moved the. ADU closer to the home. But still no closer than the garages today. You're not making it any closer because if you're demoing part of the. Part of the garage. You wouldn't necessarily be making it any closer to the. To the home. Um, I'm in support of the sidewalk easement. Um, I think we solve. Multiple of the ADA problem, we solve, we solve it at least one of the apron sides and we solve the cross slope issue. Uh, we don't fully resolve the other side, but we do make it better. I would propose a condition that we. Uh, man, they have to maintain the driveway in a complete, free and clear. Um, condition that it can't have any storage there. And like I said, the depth on the garages as well, I would propose a, a condition. Um, oh, for that, that's my comments.
Let's see, Commissioner McCocken, you have your. Mic on.
If there were a fire in this ADU. And the fire started right at the, uh, you know, barn doors of the ADU. How do the people get out of the ADU?
Um, but let's give that to the architect, um. To respond to about exiting out of a 200 square foot. Space.
The sliding door itself is a legal exit. It's, uh. Excuse me?
Fire is there. They can't get out that way. How do they get out?
It's a, it's a slide, it's a door, it's a sliding door system, like you would walk out of a sliding glass door of your house.
Right, but it's on fire, so they don't want to approach the fire because fire code requires two ways.
Uh, we have a secondary exit that goes right through the shower.
Through the shower. That's pretty hot. So that people can walk in through their house through the shower?
If they wanted to, yeah.
They wanted to. Where is the transit stop that's within a half a mile of this property?
Right around by, we're not, right around the corner from, uh, Amtrak.
You're within a half a mile of Amtrak?
Yeah, yes.
By walking distance or by a flight of a bird? Flight of a bird?
Walk.
So I could walk from Casa Romanica to the train station that would measure less than half a mile?
We also have a bus stop, uh, right around the corner from us as well.
On Del Mar? It stops at the corner?
On Del Mar.
Uh, the, the flower stop?
Right.
Oh, yeah, it's on Del Mar.
The distance from the, uh, residence to the train station is point four miles and that's by walking.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the number of people that we would allow in the ADU?
There are minimum building standards, uh, related to, um, maximum occupancy. Those would be, need to be met, uh, pursuant to the certificate of occupancy that would get, that will get issued. For this ADU.
And how is that enforced?
Um, well, i- if, if there's an issue of over occupancy, um, somebody would need, as, as. Could exist in any dwelling unit in the city, uh. The, uh, somebody would generally complain, um, to code enforcement staff and we would go and investigate.
And so then they'd measure the square feet and try to allocate the number of people per square foot, which is pretty hard to do. You know, I don't really go for the, just the two cars on that driveway because they've eliminated the whole driveway. All the way to the back of the property. Where it used to widen up where two park, two cars could park side by side instead of back and front. And my last comment would be is that. You know, we're allowing a historic property demolition permit. And the following shall be made that any environmental impact caused by the demolition of the historic building. Structure or other resources shall be mitigated to a level of insignificance as those terms are used in the. Uh, California Environmental Quality Act. And I just think from the reduction of parking spaces on the property. That are proposed here. You know, I'm not for the demolition permit. I really, you know, we're letting them landscape by used to be a driveway.
Okay, um.
I think it doesn't meet that term. I could not say that we've mitigated to a level that's insignificant. The demolition, what the demolition permit will cause to these neighbors. In terms of parking out on the street. If you have two or three families living in this area, you know, in this. Um, I think we're, we're, it, this will highly impact the number of cars parked out on the street. They could park an RV in that one place and take up the two car spaces. I think we're doing a disservice to the neighborhood.
Okay, Commissioner Prescott?
Thank you. Uh, I agree with Commissioner McCann as far as his observations with the sidewalk easement. However, in, in good conscience, I, you know, I'm looking at, um, on page 20. And I think it's item C, the approval or conditional approval of the minor. Exception permit will not be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of the general public. And where that. Proposed ADU unit is where the garage is now. If it remained a garage. I would have no issue with it. But once it's turned into an ADU and you put a family back there and you have cars in the driveway blocking. Uh, the entrance for fire safety. And you push them back to a zero property line where there's no escape in the back, they're up against the wall. Uh, I, I, I don't see in good conscience how I could approve that.
Commissioner Prescott, if I can, uh, clarify here, the, the minor exception permit request is for the. Uh, non-conforming setback on the west side.
On the west side?
Yeah.
So would this? Fall under that same condition where the ADU is?
No.
Fire, uh, safety, health, welfare, when, I mean, we're dealing with people living in that unit. Why would that not still apply?
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on this again, and I think Adam did as well, uh, per code and by, by right, they're able to keep that. Uh, accessory building. At PL, at property line, if it's under 450 square feet.
That, that I understand, but I'm, I'm saying as far as. Putting a family back there where the, where the driveway is blocked now because there's no, there's no parking. The parking is on that driveway, so there's no. No means for a fire police to get back to that, that home. It's a home, it's, it's a family's home now. On this piece of property. So you, you basically have two families. And potentially three families on this, this property. So how is the safety addressed for this unit back there? Being backed up to a zero property line, there's no exit on the rear. There's an exit, I guess, through the shower. And then you have the sliding glass door, but how do you, how do you get an emergency vehicle back through there when the, when the cars are now blocking the driver? And you would probably add another car because you have a family there.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Prescott Leffler, I will, uh, feel that question, so. You, you bring up very valid points and, um, uh. Those are considerations, uh, as far as the use of. The structure for an ADU is concerned. However, the use of the property as an ADU is not in the purview of the commission's. Uh, determination tonight. It's not, it's not one of the permits being reviewed, um, and so. Ultimately, while the commission can express concerns about this, it, it's, it's, it's not part of, um, it's not part of the. Applications, uh, presented tonight. Um, and while, you know.
So can I clarify? So it's basically, uh, the demolition or partial demolition of the garage. But if I were not in agreeance with that and basically want a full demolition of the garage because it's not in good shape. Would that be in my purview?
Yeah, anything that has to do with the, uh, demolition of the, of the garage, uh, structure. In terms of its, um, the, the redesign that they're proposing. Uh, all of that is, is within the, the, um, the review of, of, of that permit, as long as the findings. Uh, for that permit can be made.
Based on, based on what I'm reading here. I would make a motion then. That it would not be. Partially demoed, but completely demoed. And then include the, um, side easements. And the conditioned driveway, free and clear, and the rest of the, the conditions that, uh, Commissioner McCann offered.
Okay, uh.
A full demo.
I'm, I'm gonna kind of change the tone a little bit. As far as the architect is concerned, I think they've done a wonderful job with the historic structure part of this project. And we have, in the past, certainly allowed, uh. Uh, historic structures to have. Additional space, um, remodel on the back of the structure. Out of public view. And I think they've kept it, uh, they didn't look for a big two-story out the back or anything that, uh, we've had to address in the past. And, um. Uh, so I'm comfortable with the historic structure and the addition to it. We're looking at doing a recommendation to city council and they are going to be the ones that, um. Make the final decision on this. And as far as the Mills Act improvements, um. We really don't have much to do with that, uh. Uh, we make a list and then the city, uh, council negotiates, uh. The contract, um, with the applicant and they're agreeing to, uh. Make all the improvements that have been, um. Have not been implemented on the Mills Act. Uh, one of them being the garage restoration. And. The ADU or a small accessory building is allowed on the property line, uh. In the back there, um, and the ADU, if the garage was gone, is by right and we don't have. Any say in the matter as far as discretionary. Um, I've been struggling with the, uh, fact that. We're approving the drive, we're not, we're not approved, we're recommending to council to approve. These things a little piece, piecemeal and that's why I was pushing that, uh, if the, um. ADU were existing right now, I wouldn't have any problem. With the, uh, project at all. But the more I read of what we're being tasked at, um. They will, and, um, Adam and David, David, uh. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, they will not be able to do. Anything, am I correct? Um. If they don't get the ADU permit, is that correct?
That, that is correct, Commissioner McCann.
And on the plans, they kind of. Threw some things at us talking about, well, we're gonna restore the garage. And that's on the drawings two or three times and, uh, the architect, could you tell me why you? Put that on the drawings? That would be.
Yes.
And redo it to the garage and that's because the Mills Act required, correct, in the contract?
Well, the Mills Act, that, the Mills Act gave a few options. One, either restore it to its present location or demolish it. So we're, um, taking like the in-between, we are tearing down a bunch of it because of. The structural engineer's concerns and so we're maintaining more than 50% of it. And transforming that portion of it into a detached ADU.
Did the Mills Act say? Um, demolish it and replace it? Or did it just say demolish?
No, the Mills Act was to renovate it or demolish it.
Okay, so you'd be in compliance with the Mills Act if you just demolished. And by right. You can have the ADU, is that correct, Adam?
I can go, a brand new ADU right up against property line.
Correct. Is that correct, Adam and David?
Uh, yes, that's correct. They, um, they could, if they demolished it, they could then just replace the existing. Uh, structure or, or one that's the size of what they're proposing now in that location, um. Uh, and use it as an ADU.
Okay, so I see that, um, since we can't. The end result. Um, is that they are gonna. Be able to have an ADU. Um, by right, they can have it on the property line. Um. And once that's done, um, they're only required, I believe, to have two off-street. parking spaces, since they have it now. They don't have to be covered, is that correct? David?
Actually, the replacement, or excuse me, the conversion of the garage unit into a ADU does not require them to replace parking covered or otherwise.
Very good, that's what I wanted to make. So it's I I have to say I'm in support of the project, only that they aren't asking for anything they can't have. And since I can't comment on the ADU, I can only comment on the landscape and the architecture. I am in support of the landscape and architecture and I think we have to be very careful about even discussing discretionary issues about the ADU at this time. So that's where I'm at. Do we have any more comments from commissioners?
Yes, if someone's living in the ADU, what is the fire rating of the walls along with that roof that is not parapeted? Because generally in most cities, if you have someone living on a property line, you've got to meet higher fire standards and it usually requires a parapet wall on the roof.
You require a parapet unless there's a wrap back of the firewall. And I think the architect, he's probably studied it, I'm assuming it's going to be a one to two hour wall with a wrap back at the season line.
So is that the demolished?
If you look at the yeah, if you look at the plans on sheet A four, specifically the ADU elevation, we do have a parapet plan and it's a one-hour wall per code. So we will have to work within the Orange County Fire Authority and the Building Department to maintain the code minimums for that building up against the property line for the ultimate protection and life safety issues of the, or in the ADU.
And we have the protection that the Plan Check and Building Department is tasked with that part of the approval process. Commissioner Prescott, I see that your mic is open.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just listening to you.
Okay. Well, I think it looks like we're done with the discussion, do we have someone who would make a motion? If not, I can make one.
I guess I have a quick question, I just want to confirm, Adam, that you said that even if the, the, the rear garage got torn down, it would not have to come, it could still be zero, zero lot line? Why wouldn't it be subject to a rear setback? Is that because it's an accessory structure?
Correct, small accessory structure.
That's correct. San Clemente Municipal Code seventeen twenty-four zero four zero allows accessory structures in residential zones that are less than four hundred and fifty square feet to go up to the rear and side property lines as long as they are entirely in the rear half of the property.
Okay, I'd propose to make a motion.
And if I can, before you make that motion, if I can just remind the commission, there are the two conditions related to the ADU, which were, unfortunately, we inadvertently omitted those from the draft resolution that was provided. But there's two conditions that staff is recommending to ensure that the back unit becomes an ADU. And that is for the purposes of ensuring that we're not letting them remove their required parking, even if it's nonconforming without, without complying with the ADU requirement.
Do you have a condition of approval number or anything you want to put that in?
So let me. Yeah, it looks like David is putting up the PowerPoint with those conditions right now, so you, so you can make a motion and include those.
Could you read those to us, David, so if we have a motion, we can just refer to your conditions that you're adding?
Yes, I'll go ahead, can you guys see my screen? I'm not sure if I'm showing anything.
Oh, it doesn't, it's just a single bar, just go ahead and read the conditions, David.
That will do, let me. Okay, here's the first one. The partial demolition of the detached garage shall be completed in conjunction with an approved and issued building permit, which allows the partial garage demolition and conversion of garage space into an accessory dwelling unit. Second condition, in the event the use of the accessory dwelling unit terminates, the property owner shall restore the property's current level of compliance with parking requirements.
Okay, do we have a condition that we can refer to for whatever option Commissioner McCann wants to put on the sidewalk?
I'll just state that.
What option we use?
I'll, I'll state that in my motion, Chair.
Okay, very good. That would in the motion, you'll have to state it as a condition.
Okay. I recommend that we approve, or I recommend I make a motion that we recommend to city council that they approve cultural heritage permit twenty dash three seventy-four, minor exception permit twenty-one dash zero zero one, and demolition of historic permit, historic property permit twenty-one dash zero nine five, Gonzales residence addition and remodel. I propose in the motion that we recommend to council that the two staff stated conditions be added into that. Additionally, that there'd be a condition that the driveway in front of the side fence, wherever it may be, be kept completely free and clear for the exclusive use of parking of vehicles. Part of my motion is that we recommend the sidewalk easement be requested or required of the applicant with the Ole Hanson pavers built in that sidewalk easement around the driveway. Additionally, that there'll be thirty-six feet clear driveway length from the back of the sidewalk easement to the fence or to the gate swing if the gate swing is out towards the street. And that's my motion.
Do we have a second? If not, I'll second. So we have a motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Crandall. We will do those voice vote.
Can I?
Now, one moment for Commissioner Cosgrove.
Yeah, I just didn't understand that last couple sentences about the thirty-six feet, what is that? What's the purpose of that?
The purpose is to make sure that there's sufficient length in that driveway to park two cars in tandem fashion.
Okay.
That if the gates are propped halfway open, they can still park thirty-six feet, I think, because you want.
If the gates all the way up and towards the street, then it still can get thirty-six feet. If eighteen feet is the required length of a parking space per planning, that's how I get the thirty-six.
Very good.
And that's from the back of the sidewalk easement.
Okay, very good. We'll do the, the vote, Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye.
Commissioner McCaughan?
No.
Commissioner Prescott?
No.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is an aye, so we have a three ayes and two noes. So this moves on to city council, Adam, do you have any comments or questions on the driveway changes or the driveway and sidewalk issues?
Chair Crandall, staff does not have any questions that Commissioner McCann's instructions were, are, his conditions are very clear.
Very good, okay, well, congratulations to the applicant. It was a good discussion, sometimes we have opinions that are contrary to code because sometimes state mandates things we don't like. But we're obligated to do our best to comply with those. So we will go on to the next item, which is three inches thick. This is Jennifer Savage's project, this is the general plan amendment PL N twenty oh thirty-six, housing element and safety element updates.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I will pull up a short PowerPoint from staff. Okay, good evening again. So in addition to staff that you have here this evening, project planner, myself, Jennifer Savage, as well as the community development director and our city attorney, we also have three consultant teams for the housing element, we have Veronica and Jamie. For the safety element, we have Claudia, and for our environmental impact report, we have Jennifer and Nick. This evening, we will have a presentation from our consultants, including some identifications of how the city has addressed comments from HCD. And of course, we'll have time for a planning commission questions and most importantly, planning commission recommendation to city council. The, the timeline that you should keep in mind while we're having our discussion tonight is after the recommendation that you provide this evening, the draft EIR comment period ends on September seventh. And if someone wanted to submit a public comment on the housing element, not the EIR, but the housing element, and wanted those comments to be considered for revisions into the housing element, we would need those comments by September twenty-first. However, keep in mind that someone can submit comments at any time on the housing element. And then we're targeting the October fifth city council date for adoption of the housing element so that we can meet our October fifteenth deadline to submit to HCD. Going back to the planning commission recommendation, this evening you have three options. You can recommend approval, recommend approval with changes, or recommend denial. And we can come back to this slide if the commission wishes at the end of our presentation. We'll go ahead and stop sharing this and allow Veronica from VTA to bring up her presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer, can the, can the City Clerk or ITA allows me to share? I assume this is the PowerPoint that is projected and everybody can see it?
Yes, thank you.
Great, okay, so I'm gonna give an overview of the housing element, the process that we have taken in updating the housing element and some of the key changes that we made since the last time you saw it and the draft housing element level. So what we also want to do is also give you a review of the draft safety element after the discussions on the housing element and explain to you what the next steps are. Certainly, in updating the housing element and safety element, somewhat concurrently, there's been a lot of community outreach that we have done back in October twenty twenty, twenty twenty, and we've done the first webinar on some housing element and safety element, really giving the community a general idea about what those, the scope of those two elements, and then we did another one back in January twenty-first, twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, to really start looking at needs and, and concerns that the community have. And certainly, one thing that was an important component of the housing element is looking at candidate, candidate sites for the housing element and how, how we're going to accommodate housing growth in the community, and so we did an online survey between February fifth and March twenty-sixth and allow residents to comment on the different candidate sites. And then back in April, we have a planning commission meeting to review the candidate sites and then we had on May eighteen, the city council reviewed the draft housing element. The draft housing element was available for the public to review for about a month before, at least three weeks actually, before we sent it off to the state for their sixty-day review, which ended August sixth, and we are out under somewhat of a guideline, a timeline in order to get the housing element completed, definitely by October fifteen, that's the deadline that we have in order to complete the housing element tonight is the planning commission and then city council, the first meeting is scheduled for September twenty-first. Then we, HCD will have the opportunity to review the adopted housing element. And, and that takes about ninety days, their review of the adopted housing element, if they have any more comments, so we'll, we'll hear back from them after the ninety days. Just to give the public a general idea or just a review of what the housing element is, it is part of your general plan, it's a required element of your general plan, it provides an assessment of the needs in your community and what would be the best way to accommodate those needs given the constraints and opportunities and resources the city has. It also sets the city's goals, policies, and programs when it comes down to how you're going to address those needs. The housing element is a little bit different from the rest of the general plan in that it has to be updated every eight years. And for Orange County, within the Southern California Association of Governments region, your housing element is due October fifteen, twenty twenty-one. The housing element also differs from the rest of your general plan in that it has to be reviewed by state agency for compliance with state law. That review is very strange, and, and we've completed the initial round of the review now. This is currently in the sixth cycle of the housing element, covering the eight-year planning period of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine. So when we sent the housing element to HCD, there were basically three areas that they focused on. One was the affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is a new state law, this is a new requirement, and you can see that in the appendix, there's about like fifty-something pages, at least, on, on analyzing the existing conditions in the city and how your site inventory is distributed throughout the city based on different characteristics. The, the comments that we got from the state initially, really because we prepared the AFFH affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis before the state released this guidance. It was, the guidance was released on April twenty-eighth. And we have already, by that time, we have already completed the the analysis based on what we think the state is looking for. And, and because we have a very strict deadline of October fifteen, we want to make sure that we meet that deadline. So we did it ahead of the state's releasing its guidelines. So the comments that we, we received from the state is now kind of aligning it back to the guidelines. We have seen submitted the, since we submitted the draft housing element, we saw the guidance and we actually kind of preempted the, the state and we have substantially revised the analysis into, to comply with state law. So the, the AFFH analysis has, has the most significant changes in terms of the framework of the analysis. The other comments that we have on the housing element is really that, that we received was basically technical in nature, they just want a little bit more information about extremely low-income households and also housing conditions based on local knowledge. Then the next group of the site's inventory, next group of comments focuses primarily on the city's candidate sites for meeting the regional housing needs allocation. Some of the sites are small, how do you, how do you encourage large consolidation so that you can have projects of some kind of substantial, well, I shouldn't say substantial, but adequate size so that you can accommodate site design that, and. have projects of some kind of substantial, well, I shouldn't say substantial, but adequate size so that you can accommodate site design that and amenities and all that. So we elaborate a lot more about the site information. They also have comments about environmental constraints and how we look at capacity. So we have as part of that responding to the state, we have expanded the discussions about the site inventory. Other state comments related to ADUs is accessory dwelling units. The state wants us to actually reduce our projections for ADUs. We were we were projected a little bit higher than 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 they they would like to what they that they think that we can substantiate based on current trend. And so we went back and and did a more moderate projection of that. There are comments on the city's emergency shelter overlay, why there is no interest in building a shelter. But the inch, the the information that we we expect provided to the state is that it's not so much of an interest. It is very expensive to build an emergency shelters and keep it operated. So there is no funding for it. And more importantly, this the federal government, which is the the major agency HUD that provides funding for emergency shelters and that type of programs, their their policy direction is not emergency shelters, is to actually house people first, try to transition people directly to housing so that they don't become homeless. So so the policy direction is different than maybe about ten years ago. And so the funding is not really there to provide for emergency shelters. So it's not so much of an interest. It's it's a matter of funding availability. The sites continue, the your business park continues to be a suitable location for the emergency shelters overlay. It's it continues to have adequate capacity. And so we elaborate on that. Land use control, it does talk about lot consolidation. We we emphasize the fact that the city has actually adopted a very a new lot consolidation program, but unfortunately, because it's new, we were not able to show the state what the impacts are so far. So we'll have to monitor how that works. But that that lot consolidation program is really quite impressive in many ways that to allow to to encourage that. CUP process, the state, the city is in the process of considering changing the threshold for CUP. So we were able to provide that information to the state. There is one thing that they are asking about is that residential care facilities for seven or more people, whether there are constraints to developing that. And this particular comment is not targeted, but the city of San Clemente, they've been asking that for every single city jurisdiction in the state and like to reevaluate that. So the city's response to that is probably through the reasonable accommodation process to allow for that in in the future. So, you know, city may have to be doing some kind of zoning code amendments in the future, but primarily through reasonable accommodation. Housing programs, they are looking for a little bit more specific timelines, which we were able to kind of beef up on that as part of the revisions to the state. So the state hasn't seen the revisions yet, but and and we will be submitting the revisions as part of the adopted housing element. Yeah. So then now I'm going to pass it on to Claudia to give an overview of the safety element.
Thank you, Veronica. The safety element is also one of seven required elements in the general plan. It it addresses such topics as fire, flood, drought, earthquake, climate change, other hazards. It's it's really the 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 place that sets the citywide goals and policies that protects the community from hazards. Your current safety element was adopted in twenty fourteen when the city went through the the process and and updated adopted a brand new centennial general plan. Next slide, please. So next, I'm going to talk about some of the changes that were made to the safety element. The there was subsequent legislation that was passed after your centennial general plan was adopted. And that requires the safety element to be updated at the same time that the housing element is updated. This update complies with state law. The the focus for this particular update was to really look at primarily fire hazards and climate vulnerability and climate adaptation. You could also obviously look at some other things. So we updated a few other things in the safety element while we were, you know, doing the update. Both the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, which is the agency that oversees CAL FIRE, and the California Geological Survey have reviewed the proposed changes to the safety element, and they are satisfied that the requirements, their requirements have been met. Next slide, please. So what was updated were the maps. We also addressed CAL FIRE policy requirements. CAL FIRE reviewed the existing safety element and made recommendations as to places that they would like to see policy either added or bolstered to make, you know, more strong. And that's because the city does have some areas that are in the very high fire hazard severity zones. And those maps are also included in the updated element. We also were able to incorporate some recent studies, the Climate Action Plan, what had been done and adopted after the last safety element, as well as a sea level rise vulnerability study that was just adopted in twenty nineteen. So we were able to incorporate those two documents by reference into the safety element. Minor update to flooding and marine hazards. There was a small change to the tsunami inundation zone. And I believe there was a little bit of change to the the flood zone maps, nothing, you know, very very huge, small minor updates. And then because the San Onofre Nuclear Generation Plant is experiencing ongoing decommissioning and dismantling, we updated the radiological hazards section of the safety element. And then as per state law, we created a new climate change section. And that's like, so some of the key policy additions are that CAL FIRE has a new requirement that if if a city does have very high fire hazard severity zones, they must have a policy to identify areas in the city that have only one point of access and egress. They also require cities to to really kind of beef up your evacuation planning and identify those evacuation routes for really a range of different emergency scenarios, fire for earthquake, you know, different types of of emergency scenarios. And then we also added some policy to ensure that new development and redevelopment really incorporates fire safe development practices. And then, as I said, the climate change section incorporates, it really incorporates what the city has already adopted as policy from the Climate Action Plan and the sea level rise vulnerability assessment. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica and Claudia. Commissioners, this evening, we are here to answer any questions. As a reminder, the the commission did request hard copies of the draft housing element that we did submit to AC HCD a couple of weeks ago. And thank you for that request. I hope that it provided you some time to review the the large document. The version that you have in your packet tonight contains red line changes, and those revisions address the comments that HCD provided to the city. The safety element, which is also included in your packet, contains red lines showing the changes that we've made to address the new state laws. And then your packet also contains the draft EIR. Staff and our consultants are available for any questions. Should the commission have any?
Very good. Thank you very much, Jennifer and the group. Do we have we have one, I believe, letter from the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition that was submitted on this item. It's too long to read. So Cecilia, do we does that get put into the record? Or how do we handle that public comment?
Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Crandall, I can answer that. Per our public comment guidelines, I can read three minutes worth of the of the letter and then note that it's been delivered to the commission unless since it's our only comment, if the commission would like the entire letter read, I can do that as well.
I think it's like nine or ten pages in in total. It's with the yellow, which has every commissioner been able to, or did they receive that in email from my people from Lisa? I see everybody in the meeting that they received. And so the commissioners have seen it. So it's probably appropriate to trip to read three minutes of it, I think, by our rules. You want me to keep time or Adam or?
I've got my stopwatch ready. I'll take care of that. Thank you. Dear Chair Crandall, Chair Pro Tem McCann, Vice Chair Tyler and Planning Commissioners Cosgrove Camp McCann, McCacken and Prescott Lefler. The San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition is an organization of individuals who are committed to improving the opportunity and choices for affordable homes in San Clemente for those who live and work in our city. Since getting notice from city staff on Friday, August thirteenth of the most recently revised housing element, we have done our best as volunteers to review the changes to the document. We would like to offer you feedback and reiterate some of our earlier recommendations in the form of this public comment. Unfortunately, there was insufficient time allowed to do a thorough review of the revised housing element to compare it with to compare it to the letter from the California State Office of Housing and Community Development found here. Then there's a link. That said, we do think that our recommendation will help meet some of the requirements outlined in the letter from HCD. Before the housing element is referred to the City Council, we advise Planning Commissioners to take time to fully analyze the review letter from HCD, as well as the serious concerns we raise here to ensure that all these concerns are met in this revision. Our initial review suggests there is much room for improvement. Observations requests regarding the draft to be presented at the August eighteenth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting are as follows. One, we commend the staff and consultant for adding more specific timeframes to the proposed programs, though we are not sure they will be sufficiently detailed to meet HCD requirements. Two, though it appears the ADU projections were decreased to align to HCD guidance, we were nonetheless glad to see less reliance on ADUs to meet the lower income affordable housing goals. Three, we were delighted to see that the closed hospital at six fifty four Camino de los Maris has been added to the site inventory list. Four, we were concerned in particular that the following recommendations, which we made in our earlier public comment, were not incorporated. And we hope they will be in the next draft. Then there's sub bullets, A SCAHC, request that the following additional sites be included in the site inventory. One parcels number six eight eight zero one one six zero one and six eight eight zero one one zero two. These two parcels on Avenue to Pico owned by the Emergency Shelter Coalition should be zoned high density residential Talega forty dwelling units per acre for low, very low affordable housing. Two, one hundred Avenue to Precidio, the old city hall site. We request that the city donate this site and dedicate accumulated accumulated in lieu funds for building affordable housing here. The site is categorized as a moderate resource site and is very favorable for success as it is positioned near city resources, education, jobs, public transit, et cetera. Three parcel seven zero one zero four three zero eight, a site vacant site owned by the Ranch of Santa Margarita Water District. Though currently categorized categorized as open space, the city should include this site as an affordable housing site. The city should work with the Water District under the Surplus Public Lands Act to designate this site for donation and use for affordable housing. The city should create a new SB two zone comprised of parcels six eight eight zero one one zero one and six eight eight zero one one zero two, the two parcels of land on Avenue to Pico owned by the Emergency Shelter Coalition, which wants to provide emergency shelter and affordable housing at the site. Three, we recommend that a higher percentage of vacant sites be zoned for lower income affordable housing. Why not zone all the vacant sites for lower income affordable housing? Since these sites are more likely to be developed than parcels with existing uses. The HCD review letter discusses the inclusion of non vacant lands in the site inventory in item number four on pages five and six. And that is my time.
Very good. And have these been Jennifer, did you receive these this letter and did each of the consultants get a copy?
Our staff has reviewed the letter. It has not yet been transferred to the consultants. But if you have any questions about their specific recommendations, we are prepared to identify where the housing element was revised to address these comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does anyone have specific questions for the consultants or staff?
I don't know if it's relevant to the staff or that you can even answer this, but relating to the letter and also just in general, affordable, low income and low low income, how do you guarantee that? Because we're seeing that these units are being built, ADUs and other units, and they're being rented at an average of eighteen hundred to two thousand a month. And to me, that's not affordable. So what are the safeguards? Or you mean, how does that work?
So currently, right now, the city of San Clemente does not require deed restrictions on accessory dwelling units to guarantee their category of affordability. However, because of their their natural cost, they are considered in one of the affordable housing categories. They don't all count towards the very low or low income category. Some do, and some also count towards moderate and above moderate. Outside of accessory dwelling units, there are affordable units in the city such as apartments or even smaller, say, ten plexes, six plexes. And those affordable units are the affordability is guaranteed by deed restrictions.
And on those low, low affordable housing units, are the impact fees, development fees waived?
In most cases, they are. You will see some agreements from previous affordable housing developments where the development impact fees are still paid, but they are covered by grants or other government funding.
So infrastructure, place fire, everything else is, I mean, there is money going into that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any question, other questions for staff or the consultants? Sure. Commissioner McCann.
Um, I have one. I will try and be as brief as possible. I'll apologize in advance for the technical nature of my comment or concern. It has to do with the EIR and the VMT analysis of the housing element. And I'm really concerned that I don't know if it's possible to change it or address it or comment on it or not, but the VMT standards in housing element, what they did is they defaulted to the state standards. And then they also used Orange County vehicle miles traveled as a baseline. And San Clemente is a very, very difficult location to try and make any kind of compliance with VMT standards because of our distance to employment centers. And I'm really concerned that the city hasn't adopted its own VMT standards. And that by using these standards or these criteria in this EIR, we're going to be setting a precedent. we're going to be setting a precedent. So I'd love it if we could at a minimum say something to the effect of, you know, this, this, you know, methodology was used in the absence of city standards, but it's really only being used for the purposes of this housing element. And that the city will consider adopting revised standards and conditions in the future because Laguna Niguel just adopted much more favorable V M T standards. And it's it's very technical, but San Clemente is just very difficult to comply. And I'm just terrified that this will become our standard when it doesn't have to be. That's my comment.
Jennifer, do you have one of your consultants that would like to respond to that?
I'll, I'll start with asking if Nick has a response and then I can also back Nick up.
Yeah, um, the the traffic consultant who prepared that is not here, unfortunately. But I I understand that. And I think you're right. It is that they had to use something and and it's a valid concern. And so I can I can relay that to the traffic consultant and I can speak to him. And I just, you know, unfortunately, I just don't have the expertise quite to address it completely, but that that's definitely valid. And 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 if the example you use of another local agency in the region has done something similar. I think that that's a good, a good case. So I can, I can follow up on that issue and we can have that a response.
Thank you, Nick. And a little bit of background, our previous traffic engineer was looking at the V M T analysis that the city would use, our baseline. And they were considering using the O C T A model. So at at least this E I R follows what the intent of the traffic engineering division with the city would follow. However, to Nick's point, we will confirm whether we can add language in the E I R to address your concerns.
May I ask a question?
Thank you, Scotty. Those are good questions. Yes, Commissioner Prescott.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner McCann's observation of the V M T, especially when many drive to San Diego or Irvine or beyond. And we do have a transit center, so maybe that could offset it. My question is regarding the housing around a transit center and the advantages that some would see in an A D U units. As far as can they be reassessed if you put one on your property? Can that the entire property be reassessed or just that A D unit be reassessed? And explain what the type of zoning is now around, let's say, our transit down at the pier bowl.
So let's see, I'll take the easy one, the zoning around the pier bowl. You have multiple zonings around the pier bowl. You have mixed use zoning as well as commercial. And you do have some public or visitor serving zoning as well. In terms of the reassessment of property, though, that rule would follow the county assessors rule. And I don't want to give you a firm answer. I don't know their exact process. But in most cases, they will reassess you based on the improvements. So they they'll reassess you on the improvements of the A D U, but not necessarily beyond that.
Yeah, from what I understand, the entire property is not reassessed, only the A D U unit is looked at. So if it's 150,000 to build it, or that's the value of it, it's 1500, that's it. That the entire property would not be reassessed.
That sounds correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff on this presentation? Yes, Commissioner Cosgrove.
Hi, thank you. There's a lot of work here. And on the safe element, on the hot, very high fire hazard areas. I'm just not finding anything other than hey, we're going to coordinate with the sheriff on evacuations. Not really seen any analysis on single egress routes in those areas. And we have a lot of high fire zone areas in San Clemente. I was a little bit surprised to see so many. I know. So I'm just, am I looking in the right place? Because I really didn't see very much about it.
Yeah, and I'll start. Claudia, feel free to back me up if I've missed something. There's a specific policy in the safety element to ensure that the city will analyze where we have single egress locations. It's not something that was done as part of the safety element, but it is required for us to do in the future.
We have a date on when that will be or timeframe for that? Put an act as an action item?
Unfortunately, we don't have a date. It's it's uncertain at this point when we would have the the capacity to do that. Claudia, do you have any additional input?
The only thing I can say is that I know the city is updating their local hazard mitigation plan. And there was some talk of perhaps doing that identification as part of the update of the local hazard mitigation plan. And I do also know that the that Cal Fire is in the process of reworking and, you know, taking another look at those high fire hazard severity zones. So it's possible that, you know, that that the footprint of those areas may change. That analysis was supposed to be done this year. I I don't know if they'll get it done. They've been unfortunately very busy doing other things as we know. And so I guess I, you know, the city may make a decision to wait until the the new zones have been identified so that they know exactly, you know, what neighborhoods are in those zones and not.
Okay, I mean, I, what what can we do to support more action for evaluating a program to address this in the city, not just the egress, but just communication to those residents so they really understand that they're in there and things that they can do to minimize fire risk. Just, I mean, just in general, I mean, I don't know that we're really doing enough there. I think it's a big issue. To me, it's not kind of if, it's when. And I, you know, it's very scary watching the news. I mean, this is a big problem. And we are in, I just think we're vulnerable and I feel like we should be more, we should do, there's more to do here. And I don't think we're really bringing it to the surface in an appropriate way. I don't know what to do, but I, how do we do that?
Thank you. So there's three avenues that we could consider. One is encouraging additional participation in our CERT program. And we could provide more information to you on that. There is some information on our website. The second is to consider looking at the local hazard mitigation plan updates and identifying a program in there or actually including the analysis in that plan. And then the third is that you'll see Cecilia, you may help me to help me on this, the the S I P or the Strategic Implementation Plan of the General Plan. That can be revised when it comes forward to you later this year, early next year to identify that as a high priority and make a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council for that strategic implementation plan measure. And just to provide some explanation of how that's connected is the Strategic Implementation Plan that actually implements the policies of the general plan. So the policy that you have before you tonight is to consider those limited egress neighborhoods. And then you would incorporate that into the S I P. And and that tells staff what their workload is approved by city council.
Okay, well, maybe you can help us when we get to the motion standpoint on what we could add to bring this. So assuming I get support from my colleagues to bring a little bit more sense of urgency to this issue. The other thing I wanted to ask is just about the Rena numbers. Those numbers. Have we compared our numbers to Rancho Mission Viejo, San Juan, where where they're growing by leaps and bounds? We're an infill city. Are these numbers in line with an infill city versus a growing city?
Yeah, so so we are, depending on what nearby city you look at, we're in line or we're below the numbers. Let me know if you want more information on that.
Jennifer, I do have the demeanor. If there is a specific jurisdiction you'd like to know, I have that data.
I just want to know if the staff is comfortable with what SCAG is telling us is our burden. I mean, I, our responsibility. Are you, do you feel like that's in line with our, 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 our size?
Yeah, so there's, there's two things to keep in mind on that. One is you know, the city does feel fortunate that we do have the number that we do have considering the high number that was provided for other cities. We're not near the 4,000 or 10,000 or even higher that other cities have seen. It is, however, it is almost double than our last two cycles. So it's, it will prove to be difficult to find how we can accommodate the units. But we do feel that with our proposed plan, we can do so.
Okay. Yeah, because if the trend continues, I'm not, you know, the longer term outlook, I think, is a concern in terms of that. And unless we get really aggressive about some kind of a plan, because what I'm seeing like on El Camino Real along that area where we've done a lot of rezoning. We've provided a lot of changes to the general plan to make that more mixed use. It doesn't seem like the people who own those properties are that all that interested in submitting plans or projects. And so we are limited by what these owners want to do with their properties and to some degree, there might need to be over time. Maybe the next 15 years, a greater re-envisioning of certain parts of the city to more in where that we think mixed use is really going to be an important element of our, of our plan to really engage the city in this plan. Because I just think in the long run, we're going to run up against the ceiling. And unless we really mount a campaign to make, you know, whether that mixed use corridor along El Camino or other areas. I'm just, the trend's not our friend. And so I just was concerned that I, you know, now we're fine. But, you know, in 10 years, when we need to redo this again, where will we be fine? If these numbers go up significantly? Not sure. Maybe that's not an issue today, but we, it just seems like we may want to have some kind of footnote in here somewhere to the council to say, you know, it may not, you know, rezoning may not be enough in the long run without a much more larger effort to re-envision sort of mixed use areas in the city longer term where we get a lot more buy in, we get more excitement, we get more people willing to actually invest. And to some degree, we may need to consider long range, a real mixed use plan that we can get people excited about, that shows concepts and shows specific areas where, you know, we are willing to work with property owners to reimagine their property to make them motivated to want to bring a project. Because I understand, you know, that's could be a lot of risk for them. And without the city really having a major plan behind it, it could be challenging to move the move people in that direction. So I don't know how you guys feel about that, but that's just, when I worked on mixed use in Irvine, it was a long time and a lot of communication and work with property owners to get them to understand the benefits to them of moving in that direction. I mean, a lot of effort went into that, a lot of outreach, a lot of consultant hours, a lot of concept plans and we may need to be thinking about that next time, not this time, but next time. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from commissioners?
Yes, I have, I have a question of Jennifer.
Commissioner Prescott.
Almost double that somewhat sobering. With that, that comment. What, what are we looking at as parking? You know, parking is a challenge everywhere and adding all this housing will certainly stress that. And I know that, what is that a half mile from transit? That no parking is required. So you could build them, you know, a unit, apartment unit and no parking space would be required. But what does it look like for the rest of the city as far as parking when you, when you address high density housing?
Yeah, so keep in mind a few things. One is if you're adding an apartment, say an A D U, the state restricts what we can require in terms of parking. And specifically, it provides a lot of flexibility. Another thing to keep in mind is that outside of A D Us, if we're just building multifamily housing, there are certain provisions of state codes again that allow some exceptions to parking. The biggest one that you may be aware of is the density bonus ordinance. And that's a state law, but it's also incorporated into our zoning code. And when you provide a certain number of affordable units, you get a a break, if you will, or some flexibility in providing less parking than a full market rate multifamily dwelling. Now, if you're building a full market rate multifamily dwelling, you must provide the the parking that's required by code. And oftentimes you will see that to be two parking spaces per unit plus guest spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Jennifer, from this point, we're being asked to recommend sending this to funding commission, excuse me, city council. So the commissioners that made comments this evening, I just want to make sure they get a response to their questions. How would we go about that? Because we won't be seeing this again. I don't believe. Is that correct?
Correct. And so if you, if any of the planning commissioners had a question that would require revisions or if they had a comment that required revisions, we can incorporate that into your motion of a recommendation.
Would it be appropriate if I could make a recommendation on parking or does state legislation prohibit me from allowing parking in units that would not have parking?
You can make a recommendation, depending on the scope of that recommendation, staff can advise you if it's inconsistent with with state law.
Could I also make a recommendation that affordable housing is not affordable if it's being, you know, at a high rent, therefore, we would have to be tasked with approving more affordable housing if it's not affordable? How would the city council address that?
So our affordable housing is based on the median income in San Clemente. And those rates are set every year. And then based on those income levels, they set rent or mortgage limits. So it's not the planning commission's purview to determine what's affordable or not.
I'm just seeing this that we're chasing the same issue. The reason part of this packet, the reason is to build affordable housing, senior housing. But once it's built and the fees, the rent is astronomical. So then we have to do it again. And that's probably why we are almost doubled on this. So I'm just trying to see as a recommendation, how I would word that to the city council as to the concern, because then they would require more housing because we wouldn't meet our affordable housing goal. Does that make sense?
Yes. And to clarify, every eight years, we will likely be required to plan for additional housing. So your, any recommendation that you provide to city council won't prevent that. However, if you wanted to ensure that any affordable housing units that we do approve over the next planning period remain affordable, you can make recommendations to You can um make recommendations to ensure that any of our programs supporting affordable housing. Ensure that through a deed restriction or an affordability uh requirement. Remain for the longest period that we can keep by state law.
Can we carve out a section of housing that would be for, let's say, professionals that would live in the city? Police, fire, teachers, are we able to do something like that?
I will have to lean on Veronica for that. I have not seen that particular language.
Um, can you repeat the language? I'm sorry.
Uh, the question was, uh, could we carve out housing out of these numbers? That would be dedicated for those who lived in the city, worked in the city, so that we could have them live in the city, and that would be. Uh, police and fire and teachers.
Um, not exactly, only if you have some funding, local funding involved, then you can have priority and preferences. But if you do not have a financial kind of participation in that, you, you would not be able to do that. And, and also in order to do that, you really, you can set priorities and preference, like you can set um, um, uh preferences, but not priority.
So if we wanted our police and fire that, you know, often they, you know, to reduce the V M T tax. Or the fees, you know, they're traveling from other areas to work in our area. And it would be more advantageous if they actually could buy or rent, you know, where they work. Would be, so there's nothing in these provisions that we could address?
If you, if you, we can add a policy or something in the housing element that relates to. If the city has participation in the, in the program, like if it's a market rate. Though uh housing or if it's um, uh, an affordable housing project that uh you haven't. Like contributed in financially, I don't know if you have the ability to, to condition that.
Commissioner, hi, I'm sorry, my name is Brian Bian, I'm with the city attorney's office in B B K. Uh, I actually did just come across something recently. Um, in terms of these affordability levels that we've been talking about, very low, low, sorry, extremely low, very low, low. Meet moderate, and then I saw another uh category called workforce. So HUD, uh, the Housing and Urban Development Department at the federal level does put out. Or does recognize some, I, I guess it's an income category, it's, it's a little bit fuzzy to me. Uh, what the difference is sometimes between the workforce category and middle income or what they call moderate income. And so there seems to be some overlap, but it's, it, I, I have seen that category and I'm not exactly sure. How that fits in with um.
With the workforce, um, it's a locally defined, um, uh, because it's not recognized legally in the state housing element. Law or the federal law, but um, a, again, because um the state establishes up to a hundred and twenty percent. That's moderate income, but in, in a lot of communities, even if you make moderate income, you cannot afford to buy or even rent in some communities. And so the cities, uh, a lot of cities would set policies relating to quote-unquote workforce. Typically, it goes up to a hundred and fifty percent of the area median income. These are the.
That's what I read.
Yeah, these are the people who make good income but still can't afford. And that could be your pol- police, your schoolteachers, or even your um firefighters. And, and that type of policies, you, again, you can have policies relating to those. As long as it comes from funding that is locally generated. Um, as, uh, if it's um, uh, you do have some kind of in move fee and you do. Um, and you, you may, you may have, um, you know, general funds if, if, if that, but. Anything that's locally generated funding source, you can cover um up to the workforce level. But if it is federal or state, then you have to go within the guidance of the state and federal um program guidance, which. Um, federal government doesn't go up to beyond eighty percent of the area median income. Uh, state programs do go up to a hundred and twenty percent, but the gap is really the people who make, you know, between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty. They can't afford to live or buy or rent, but then they don't qualify for. Public program, program. So I think that's where local funding, local um, local pa, um, programs come in place.
I can see the, the community benefit if we could have our, our, our sheriffs, our fire, our teachers. City workers live in the city.
I, I have seen um in other jurisdictions where they, again, they have to participate in, in somehow. In the, in, in the affordable housing project, that they have some kind of participation in there and then.
That should, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and then you can establish preferences. Um, I've seen it like now, you get, you know, um, you get points. In your, in, to move up on your waitlist for the affordable housing projects. Um, if you are um. A, you know, schoolteachers, firefighters, essential um, 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 workers that has to be in the city. Particularly, you know, with the fire hazard and all that, people who can be um, which reporting to duty immediately. Um, in the event of emergency, those are the, uh, those uh obscene cities that set pre, um, preference points for, for being moved up. On the uh waitlist um for affordable housing projects. I've even seen a community that established um based on the number of hours of community services. You get your own points, yeah, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, any other comments from uh commissioners? I see none.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I guess I'm. I'm hesitant to um, you know, raise the V M T issue with council. But I do think it's really important, but I don't want to cloud the issues. Um, I guess, what does staff feel about that?
Uh, we can certainly look into uh your question. And um, at the same time as um you making a recommendation to city council. Staff can come back and brief the planning commission uh on the status of this, of the city's V M T uh thresholds.
So are you saying, when, when is it supposed to go to council?
I, yeah, sorry, it's a little confusing. Uh, our target date was originally September twenty first. Uh, last night, city council canceled that meeting. Um, so, so we don't have a definitive date just yet. But we are, are targeting the um October fifth city council meeting.
When does the public have opportunity to weigh in? I'm sorry, um, Mr. McCann.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Prescott.
Wait, when, just to alert the public and, and how are they alerted that they can weigh in on this?
We have a housing element interest list, and so we send out emails um every time we have a, a new document. Or a public hearing uh coming up.
Okay, Commissioner McCann, back to you. We kind of interrupted you there.
Yeah, no problem. Um. I, I just, I, 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 I think it's a really important issue, um, but I don't know if it gets clouded with the housing element. I, I guess I would propose to. You know, do something to draw to their attention.
Well, you can certainly re- recommend that they consider it.
I agree.
Okay.
The same with the Commissioner Prescott's comments and Commissioner Cosgrove's. We can recommend that they consider those uh comments and staff uh can present. Those to them.
Okay, I, I guess that's part of our job is to flag these issues for them.
Absolutely.
Um, so i- if, are people ready for a motion?
Uh, it looks, I believe so.
Let me see if I can.
It's attached to one nine of seven thirty six.
Can you include the workforce in your motion?
Well, what I'm, what I want to do on my motion is I'll just make a motion about V M T and leave it open to. Any other commissioners that want to add to the motion so that you can.
Prescott can present hers and that uh Commissioner Cosgrove has one also.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, um. I move that w- we uh forward a recommendation to the city council that they approve the. General Plan Amendment, P L N twenty dash zero three six, housing element and safety element updates. And I'm gonna try and be careful about how I word this. Um. I recommend that they. Direct staff to. Look into and seek input on setting V M T standards that are appropriate for the city of San Clemente. That they don't just arbitrarily default to the state standards or use Orange County's. Uh, V M T baseline as their standards. And that they. Add a statement into the housing element. That this V M T approach used in the program E I R. Is only used, is not a, a new standard for the city, but is only being used. Within the context of that housing element E I R. And that they will be studying and potentially creating their own V M T standards for the city. And with that, I would open it up to any other commissioners that have any other recommended.
Okay, let's have uh Commissioner, uh, excuse me, um. Mr. Byan, I guess it is, with B B K, you comfortable with the, that word, verbiage since Mal is not here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Prescott.
I would like to add to that, that the council consider. A priority to essential workforce in making housing. Do, we, we don't make a housing decision, it's already in this packet. That they would direct staff to research the avenues to achieve essential workforce housing.
Very good. And did you have any comment, Commissioner Cosgrove, were you fine?
I would like the staff to um. Include in their report are these, as you know, the comments have just been mentioned. The very high fire. Um, hazard severity zones um. As part of the safety element should be elevated in priority to develop. The strategic implementation plan to address uh neighborhoods with limited egress. As well as um. Outreach programs to those affected neighborhoods with um. Appropriate messaging around preventative measures and uh other. Uh, critical facilities that they should be aware of uh in the event that they need to evacuate.
Uh, do you understand those all, Jennifer?
Can I add one more? I would like your address parking.
Prescott?
Thank you. Uh, I would like to direct staff, I'm sorry, I hate to do this to you, sounds, sounds like you have a full plate. Uh, but I would like to alert the council that uh parking would be an issue with the high density. Housing in especially a half mile, I think it's a half mile from transit, because there would be no parking. And that would be a consideration.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion by. Commissioner Cosgrove, did you second?
Yes, I did.
So we have a motion by Commissioner McCann, uh, second by Commissioner Cosgrove, we'll do a voice vote. Uh, Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner McCoggin?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Uh, going down the line, Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
And Mr. Crandall is also on ice, so we have a unanimous um approval. And great work, staff and the consultants and. It's a lot of work, a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for everything.
Okay, so um, our next item is new business and we show none unless someone wants to bring up uh. An item to uh enter into new business. I see none. Old business, I see none. Um, reports of commissioners and staff, um, Adam, do we have any uh staff reports?
Uh, you know, the only thing I have um is based on the um, it's actually a continuation of. What I was discussing at the study session today, uh, just on the tentative future agenda for planning. The next designer review subcommittee is uh August twenty fifth at four P M. And uh I would invite the public and the planning commissioners to review that. The project uh being reviewed uh at that meeting that's on the agenda now is a um. This is rather a large project on Avenue de Frontera. Um, adjacent to uh the freeway and some other residential developments. And so it'll, it'll be a, it'll be an interesting, an interesting item.
Very good. Okay, did we have a motion for adjournment?
Do you know other reports and make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Prescott and that will be to the September eighth. Twenty twenty one at six P M via teleconference. We have a second.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Cosgrove seconds. Um, we'll do a voice uh vote, uh, Commissioner Cosgrove.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner McCoggin?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is a aye also. So, um, thank you very much and um. Good meeting and Adam, welcome aboard and.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Adam, you're doing a great job.